Welcome to June 25, 2019, open session meeting of the Air Planning Board. First order of business and call to order, shall be accomplished. Second, other general business. I think, intend a motion, please, to approve the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda for the June 25, 2019, open session meeting of the Air Planning Board.
And even?
Second.
Open second, any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, on order of business is our who the minutes for June 11.
Do you say that we could be?
We defer, right?
We have deferred that?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, well, we missed that in approving the agenda, so we'll defer that till later. Thank you. Which brings us to our first order of business for leaving, which is the continued public hearing for the proposed preliminary subdivision, 54 and 36 Littleton Village, 20 lots.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to give just an overview of the various actions that I recommend that the planning board deal with tonight. We may not get through everything, but I, you know, wanted to put together the master list of issues that are before the board. The first action, which we deferred from the last meeting, where we accepted the plans for consideration and open a public hearing, I believe the planning board should start this evening by making the conservation findings per section 10.1, whatever it is in the OSRD section of the bylaw. Page five and six of my staff report, number two, describes the conservation findings made by the Conservation Commission and their recommendations to the planning board. And on page six, I have a draft recommended finding motion for the planning board to make, again, based largely on the Conservation Commission's findings, and, you know, the boards can modify those if they see fit. Second, I believe the planning board should act on the waiver request that the applicant made and as commented by the Director of Public Works, which are on page three. Third, we probably want to see any revisions or considered revisions to the plans themselves that the applicant may have made, based on the interdepartmental comments, especially the fire department and DPW, which will lead us into the two perhaps more contentious issues of the applicability of section 9.6, land clearing and grading, and also the, what I call the lot open space to the subdivision. I don't anticipate we'll fully come to an agreement with the applicant on these tonight, but I have drafted a letter to town council seeking their opinion, and in order to keep everything above board, I would insert the comments of the applicant to town council so that she can make a more informed decision. After that, I recommend, well, I actually have an update on the traffic study research that I've done. Traffic study was recommended both by the DPW and the police chief, and I've done some research into how that could be set up. And then we could discuss other issues, perhaps other consultants that we may or may not want to bring in, such as a hypogeologist or something like that. And then lastly, you know, we should, you know, continue the hearing until the next meeting, and if possible, come up with a list of issues to discuss at that meeting. So, that's my recommendation for this evening, starting with the conservation findings of the planning board.
Anybody have a comment to that?
I'd like to see what's presented, and I think it's a good way to approach it.
Okay, thank you.
Agreed.
I'm gonna just double check and make sure that we're talking about the conservation recommendation memorandum that came from the Conservation Commission. She's meeting on February 1st, correct?
Yes.
This is the one you're discussing?
Right.
Okay, great.
And based on that, I have a motion on page six of my staff report that sort of, you know, builds on that a little bit and puts in a few caveats about the stormwater basin and such. But, yeah, what you have in your hand is their recommendation on the OXBO study.
Okay, great. Just wanna, this is one of those things that has come in the mail a handful of times, and I want to make sure we have the most recent, we're working all, all working on the same one.
No.
So, okay. So, I tried to take notes, page five, page three, revisions from, from the comments from our town, our town leaders, excuse me, our department leaders, the traffic study comments, and I lost it, other issues, but you'll help me along the way?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great, thanks.
So, are we looking for a motion to accept the findings from the Conservation Commission? The February 1st memorandum?
Well, actually, on page six of my staff report, I have a recommended, recommended finding motion that the planning board could make in regards to those. Now, the planning board may or, may not agree with everything that I've written there, but I believe it's a reasonable planning board finding to ratify, so to speak, the Conservation Commission's recommendations. Again, with a few caveats, you know, namely, they recommended that stormwater basins be completely relocated out of the 100-foot buffer zone. You know, I feel that, you know, there should be a caveat when possible. You know, at this present moment, we do not have a local wetlands bylaw that prohibits such, nor do our subdivision rights or OSRD section of the bylaw strictly prohibit that. So, given that, you know, I think we can, we can reach a acceptable compromise to, you know, discuss what degree of stormwater basins can be located within the buffer zone and that sort of thing, so.
And this is the motion that you mentioned on page six?
Right, yes.
So, do we need a motion first to start chatting about it?
Not necessarily. I mean, you could read it and, you know, amend.
I'm sorry.
Do you think we need a motion before we start?
A motion to continue the hearing?
No, just discuss what were the conservation findings. Do we need a motion just to open it up to discussion, or can we just discuss another motion and then do a motion at the end? What's the procedure you'd like to do?
I am too deep into it in my brain.
My recommended recommendations would be to, if you'd like to discuss the OXBO report first and the Conservation Commission letter to the planning board back from February, because that informs my finding motion. And I think members of the Conservation Commission may be in the audience to answer questions about that, and so this is a good time to ask any questions of them if you have. And then the last step would be to make a motion on the conservation findings.
Okay. I have a couple of comments on them.
Go ahead.
And you can ask this to the Conservation Commission, too. So, this recommendation and analysis of, was done.
Excuse me, by the way, Ethan Cal.
Yeah, right. Trying to see it.
For those at home, Calvin Goldswiss with GPR joined us at the table while we were starting this.
Yes, I have, thank you.
I'm sorry, thank you. You waited for the rain to abate before you joined us?
No, actually, we came out right in the middle of the rain.
I did, too. Sorry, go ahead, Cal.
So, this conservation recommendation and analysis, or we want to call it, was based on the preliminary subdivision plan? Excuse me? She says no, she said go ahead.
It wasn't based on, it was based on the parcel of land.
Okay, all right. So, the plant, I guess that my question, does the, look, look see at the preliminary subdivision doesn't affect the analysis of the important resources on the site and whatnot? That's what I'm trying to clarify. Okay, nice statement. So, basically, we're down to the question of whether we agree or disagree or endorse the fact that the Conservation Commission, I'll read it right here, it's on, "The commission strongly raises the question of whether surface stormwater systems such as retention and retention basins should be allowed to come toward the minimum open space required. Their inclusion is part of the mandate if 50% does not serve the purpose of..." Now, we determined that the, in the updated plan beyond the preliminary plan, that the applicant reduced the size of the lots, I think, and increased the size of the open space.
Right, correct.
Therefore.
Yeah, such that the stormwater basins are not in the 50% minimum required mathematically.
Right.
They're located within the open space, but what you might call the extra 3% or so.
Can we take that and open it up? Put it over here, we have space for it.
Oh, the plan, yep.
Because that shows us that. This grading advantage right here, I think, right?
Right, that shows the open space. Yep.
So, based on that, we still have a small amount of the infiltration basin in the north. And, was there a recommendation to remove it from the buffer zone as well?
Yeah.
Yes. Move down the buffer zone.
Wetlands buffer zone, okay. So, based on this, it looks like we still have a pretty substantial amount of wetland stormwater systems within the buffer zone, but they're not in the so-called 50% open space, or in between that area. Nothing included is counted. So, the sentence they make, they say is, "The commission recommends that the stormwater basin be moved out of the wetlands buffer zone, and that it not be included as counting as part of the minimum 50% open space area." So, we pretty much covered the second part already, because it's not counted, it's a 50% open space area. You concur, Mark, or?
Yes, yeah, yeah. Even though it's quote in "open space," it does not mathematically contribute to 50% minimum.
I think this presents the same problem that we're gonna see potentially in almost any kind of development that we see that's coming up in the town of Air, because we have wetlands almost everywhere that we have to contend with. And since this is the first OSRD, I think tonight we're gonna probably end up talking about these kinds of conflicts and how we want to incorporate them into the, you know, future. So, I'm on board with, you know, accepting the recommendation that we agree with the commission that the stormwater basins should be moved out of the wetlands buffer zones.
I agree.
And address that?
Of course.
The recommendation from the Conservation Commission is just that, it's a recommendation, it's not a requirement. The planning board is the one that makes the findings, sets the requirements. In your open space bylaw, which sets those requirements, there is no prohibition against a stormwater management basin being in the buffer zone, or the open space for that matter. In fact, it's a perfectly good place for it. It's part of the open space. Oftentimes, these basins grow over with, with reeds and wetland plants, and they appear just as part of the open space. It makes perfect sense that they're there. They're also, as I talked about last time, in the lowest portions of the site where the wetlands normally are. So, to try and keep stormwater management out of the proximity of where the wetlands are in the lowest part of the site, from a planning and engineering standpoint, is difficult and is, in my mind, a fool's errand. I don't see why you would try to do that. In fact, it makes perfect sense to have it in an area where the wetlands may end up proliferating or being helped by the fact that you've got stormwater management in the lower end. So, there's no good engineering reason why that has to be. It's just a, it's a recommendation from the commission who likes to protect the buffer zone and keep anything from happening in it. However, as Air doesn't have a wetland bylaw, there's also nothing that prohibits stormwater management from being within a buffer zone, or the open space for that matter, in the OSRD. So, if that's something you want to do in the future, I suggest you put it in the bylaw, and then we will design it that way. But in this case, you'd be coming up with a restriction on us that's not in the bylaw and not required by the bylaw. So, I question whether that is correct, whether you can do that.
Could this bring me to the, this little discussion, which I've heard in a statement that I've heard Mr. Goldswiss make before, and it's based on the fact that, you know, we're not prohibiting stormwater in the buffer. But the opposite side of that is that we don't have any provision that allows it either in open space. So, there's, there's two sides of the story. You can look at it two different ways. Specifically prohibiting something or not allowing something doesn't, does not create a situation, for instance, if this, if we say that we have no statement on it whatsoever, that means we haven't allowed it either. There's language in our bylaw, basically, that says that any use that is not specifically stated as allowable is automatically prohibited. So, I take the opposite.
And this bylaw?
Yes. I can read it to you right here. So, we have it actually in a couple of sections. On the very, very first page, under applicability, under 401, "No building structure or land shall be used for any purpose or in any manner other than expressly permitted within the district in which such building structure or land is located." And under 5.1, which talks about the use of best different spaces throughout the town, all the different uses, same thing is repeated. "No land should be used, no structure shall be erected or used except as set forth in the following table use regulations, including the notes and otherwise set forth herein exempted. Any building or use of premises not within expressly permitted is hereby prohibited."
And that's section what of the bylaw?
5.1, use regulations. The point of the fact is that you can't come in and state that just because it's not prohibited, it's allowed. It's actually the opposite criteria, that if it's not allowed, it's prohibited.
No, I'm sorry, I disagree with that.
Well, you can disagree with it, that's why. I'm making the statement that I interpreted that, and it goes on to say, "All use is permitted as of right or by special permit, are subject to all applicable provisions of the bylaw." That means the whole bylaw, including but not limited to overland districts, general regulations, and special regulations, which is the OSRD, and regulations of the Board of Health. So, my position is that the statement that it's not prohibited means it's allowed is contrary to the way the bylaw is written, which is the opposite. In other words, if it's not allowed, it's prohibited. But I really want to get to the basis of the whole premise of the OSRD, which I think in good faith for the applicant, the boards, the Conservation Commission, that I viewed this, and I'm glad we started with this topic, because I viewed it totally differently. I viewed it really as a cooperative effort from day one, that we would come together, all of the boards, the planning board, Conservation, and the applicant, and try to work this out. So, we found out early on the process, for instance, the amount of, the surprise to me was the second area, to be quite honest with you, Cal, because the preliminary plan showed the anticipated stormwater over there. But the increase of the, apparently, of the surface water runoff required this extra space. So, the way I looked at the open space requirement was a cooperative effort, and it basically says, you know, we're allowed to use flexible ideas, flexible zoning, flexible lot sizes to create this concept. This showed me an effort that appears on paper that this could have, you know, contrary to your concept, I thought this could be moved out of the, of the buffer zone and decreased the number of, the size in the, because of the decrease in the amount of, you know, overland stormwater runoff and whatnot.
Can I respond to that? Can I respond to it?
Not quite yet. So, anyway, that's the way I envision it, and as far as I'm concerned, the, I would like to work this out so that we try to cooperate with the ideas of the Conservation Commission, our own ideas, and the applicant. And I think potentially the way that happens is that we may have to look at moving these out and reducing the density at the same time. So, I interpret it somewhat differently, that the, the board has the idea of this flexible concept, and it's written that way, and allowable uses have to be pretty much spelled out, or they can be, you know, prohibited or discussed and determined.
So, my response to that, let's start with the idea that we want to do this cooperatively. We came to this board back in December. I have an email to Mark in December requesting that the findings from the, the recommendations from the Conservation Commission that had been sent to this board prior to that email in December be taken up by the board in a timely fashion so that we could then do exactly what Mr. Diskin talked about doing, in a cooperative effort. We heard nothing from the board from December through to now. Now, so, the way this thing, the only way the OSRD makes sense in a cooperative effort is to do this effort before you do definitive subdivision plans.
I agree with that.
And to recognize that a client cannot sit for six months and wait for something that doesn't come, especially when we're under a time deadline for filing this subdivision. So, this board did not respond in a timely fashion, otherwise that would have happened. And so, we were forced to use what we got from the Conservation Commission, to the extent that we thought it applicable and could do, incorporate it into this as conservation findings, because this board never gave us any. You don't give us conservation findings, I respectfully suggest you don't give us conservation findings after we've done $50,000 worth of engineering on a project. Do it while we're in the preliminary phase, so then we can draw all kinds of sketches and things and come up with it, and then we do the engineering. So, this board never gave us that information. So, the cooperative effort that you're talking about didn't happen. The second thing that I want to point out is I want to read to you in section 10.0, special regulations, first line in the, in the third paragraph. "To encourage this type of development, OSRD is allowed by right, subject only to this section and the requirements of the planning board's rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land." So, that plainly says, right there in that sentence, that the rest of this bylaw does not apply to the OSRD. If it did, the OSRD wouldn't mean anything, because you'd be applying dimensional regulations, you'd be applying all kinds of other things in the bylaw that the OSRD preempts. And I think this is something you've got to get your town council to rule on, but in my mind, it's clear and it says it.
And I think, Dan, you, I agree, because we have different portions of the bylaw that state different things. And you've been clear on that, and your email was clear on that earlier over the weekend also, Cal.
I mean, I think it's, and it's the only way the OSRD makes any sense, because you're doing density bonuses, and you're doing no minimum lot size, and you're doing, I mean, so, applying the rest of the bylaw to this is nonsensical, and if you try and do it, pick and choose the things that help you, and then ignore the things that don't work, that's not how zoning works. It's gotta be by, and I'm just trying to follow, I'm trying to follow what is written.
I appreciate what you're saying, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna take exception to one thing. Pick and choose things that help us. I think we're trying to pick, I would not use the expression "pick and choose." I think we're looking at the project, this is the first one we're looking at, as we all know, looking at the project as where it sits and the area that it sits in. And the charge that the planning board has is to do the best they can with the land at the, at that spot. This may become a contentious conversation, but it's, I don't want, I don't like to hear your picking and choosing.
I was just, I was referring to Mr. Diskin going back in the bylaw and pulling things out.
I appreciate that. I just wanna, you know what I'm saying, Cal, I just want to kind of elevate it a little bit, okay?
Poor choice of words.
Thank you. That's, I don't do that very often.
So, yeah, I don't, I don't imply any ill will on your part, but I'm just, or Mr. Diskin's part, but I'm just, I get frustrated when it's clearly stated in, in black and white as part of your regulations, and the rest of the bylaw keeps getting pulled in to this discussion. It's incorrect.
It's a really good que, and it is a good question. I'm sorry, Mr. Mark.
Just gonna make a point, though I will be disagreeing later with some of Cal's rec, statements about what applies and does not apply for OSRDs. He does have a very good point, I believe, in that, you know, due to whatever reason, the planning board neglected doing a conservation finding in a timely fashion for this case, you know, perhaps being the first one, and other things came along, where, you know, I know we're acting on it late, and we're gonna do a better job in the future.
But I do want to make the point also, Mark, that we tried to do as best we could with what the Conservation Commission was asking for.
Right.
We didn't just proceed blindly. We took what we had and tried to do what we could with it.
Right, and my philosophy is, you know, which is why, you know, later on, when we get to other business, you know, I'm gonna be speaking about my desire to do a more or less complete overhaul of some of the provisions in the OSRD section that I think aren't serving the town or the applicant's well, such as the formula and a few other things. And maybe we need to be more specific about where and where, where and where not stormwater basins can occur, and development in the buffer zone, and all these things, Conservation Commission's working on the wetland bylaws. So, my philosophy is, you know, we should have something backing this up in writing when we make a finding that isn't really explicit in the bylaw. But, you know, I'm here in an advisory role, and so, I'm advising, but.
And, you know, to your point, Cal, this happened back in December. I was the person from the planning board who was on the walk during it. And at the time, we were in discussion with the gentleman from OXBO about the value of land, how we saw that as, what was being seen as valuable, by who standing at, in the circle talking about it. And that's something else that we have to kind of come to grips with. We haven't really gone through that, we haven't gone down that road yet.
That's right.
You know, in many ways, this, it's almost like this piece of land was waiting for the OSRD.
Yeah, it's almost like it. I agree.
So.
My, my only request is that.
So, I want, and I want, again.
If there was a requirement that we couldn't put the open spa, the stormwater management in the open space, and it was clearly stated in the bylaw, we wouldn't have done it.
Mm-hmm.
And there was a conversation with, with Mark Wetzel, with the owner of this property, and Mark said, "Every town does that, that's where they go." I mean, I don't, why are they fighting against that? He didn't understand that. And he said, "And you can tell them I said so."
And I had that conversation with Mark.
So.
And.
So, the why of it is what bothers me, is we're just doing it because somebody thinks it's a good idea? It's gotta be, give me, give me something to go by. You gave me this bylaw to go by. I tried to follow it closely, and you can't then bring me in and say, "Okay, now, we've got a whole bunch of other things we want to apply to this as well, that we didn't say anything about in the bylaw, because that's the way we'd like it to be." If that's the way you'd like it to be, it gets revised in the future bylaw, so then people will do it that way. I just don't think it's fair to start applying things that don't, aren't set anywhere in the bylaw, and that a lot of people would take issue with whether it's wise or not.
And we may actually be looking for outside review of some of those things.
Well, it might make sense. I mean, I'd honestly, be it this project or any other project, I think it's a bad move to say you can't have stormwater management in the buffer zone. I just think it's, it's gonna cause a lot of things to happen in subdivisions that don't make any sense.
All right. Thank you. So, we've kind of stepped off.
Yeah.
Do you have anything else? Ken? On this, on this, on this, on this item, okay? Jonathan?
You know, I have to confess that much of the legal aspects of this are over my head and beyond my comprehension at the moment. But I do think, when I look at this language, "This section 10.1 is also intended to foster compact development patterns using flexible regulations for density and lot dimensions, and to promote and encourage creativity in neighborhood design." The way I interpret that, and the reason the word "flexible" I suspect is in there, is we're trying to balance two things, the applicant's rights, and also the intentions of the town as expressed in its bylaws, regulations, and master plan. And the whole purpose and spirit of the OSRD is to encourage as mo, to preserve as much undisturbed or limited, limitedly disturbed open space as possible, and to reach that goal in exchange, we're offering, well, we'll also be creative in terms of the lot sizes and density, et cetera.
I agree.
I think that this, I don't see this, you know, I see a lot of this conversations, not in that spirit. I disagree with, I respect your disappointment about the lack of activity between December and June, but I do remember the meeting over the preliminary, and I think we did, I believe we expressed our concerns about the placement, the extension, it was just the northbound, the northern infiltration basin into portion of the buffer zone. We did express some concerns about that. And so, even if we didn't have a formal letter for you to go with, I think that you were apprised by this board about our intentions to keep as much open as we possibly could, because that's the whole purpose of having an OSRD that was approved.
Well, I think we tried to do that, too.
We ended up moving more lots, they wanted all the lots out of the buffer zone, we were able to do that. We also tried to the degree that we could to get all the stormwater management out of the buffer zone. In fact, we were thinking we only would need the one at the end of the road, and there wouldn't be much in there. It turns out, when we start running the calculations and looking at the numbers, and it's oftentimes the way stormwater works, that we needed additional detention. So, that additional detention. So that additional detention is, is basically going to be open space. It's going to look like open space, it's going to be, it's not going to have trees in it, but it's going to have growth in it and it's going to.
It's sloped and whatnot, it's graded.
It's sloped, yeah, it's graded.
It might have plants in it that.
It will have plants in it, but it's not usable. But it's not.
As a sense of, you know.
Well, you don't use the open space actively anyways. It's a passive open space, it's a passive.
We hope that this kind of development encourages the use of the open space, I mean.
Well, and so, so what we tried very hard to do was to keep, to follow those rules, to keep the, the lots out of the open spa, out of the buffer zone, which we did, and to get as much of the stormwater management out as we could. It wasn't, as in my recollection, an absolute prohibition, it was much more of a, try to get as much of it out as you can, which, which we did. And then we had to add that other basin, it's just the way the, the numbers worked out.
So Calvin, um, the other basin was added because of the sheer volume of wastewater of runoff that's going to be or because of the way the runoff's being handled?
Both.
Okay.
There's a volume issue, but it's also a detention issue from, because we had to capture that portion of it.
One of the things, and if I understand, the, the second basin, the one that's been added, if you will, of the wet basin, I think is referred to on the plan, that is supposed to capture the sheeting, the water sheeting across the pitch road?
Yes. Uh, that's supposed to, yeah, of the.
If I, I can't.
The one at the end is the one that captures the vast majority of the roadway stormwater.
The one at the far end?
At the far end.
Okay. Um, if the road were crowned, would it change the calculation?
No, no, it wouldn't because the only difference is it flows into one gutter and then it gets picked up in basins and into the base, into the stormwater rather than flowing to both sides, get picked up in two basins. So it makes for a less complicated stormwater collection system. And because of the fact that the, the volumes are relatively small and the amount of pavements are relatively small, one pipe could handle it very easily.
That's interesting because a, a smaller road actually lends itself to that.
It does, absolutely.
However, the, the, not to get ahead of ourselves, the other side of that is refreeze on a she, uh, refreeze on a pitch road can be an issue.
Can be, although this is a fairly shallow slope on this.
Yeah. You know, we get the sunlight, we get the refreeze, we continue to add melt agents to it, which has a tendency to change the runoff, so, okay. But no, but crowning the road wouldn't make.
No, it wouldn't affect the stormwater management.
Okay. Um, we also don't have, so for your calculations, we don't have building sizes. So you're basically using an assumed building size?
Well, the size, the, the structures, really what there is, building envelopes that we showed on the plan.
Exactly.
Is what we used for our stormwater management calculations.
Okay.
And to the extent that, I mean, we basically did that, the largest building envelope we could give the builder to work within, within reason on a, on a lot. So in all likelihood, they won't get houses any bigger than that on the lot. And oftentimes, they're quite a bit smaller than the envelope that we give them.
And they'll be using surface systems?
Yeah, they'll, well, they're.
Their, their gutters and divers and stuff will be surface systems or are you fully expecting?
Most likely, yeah. We're not, we didn't.
That engineering hasn't been done?
Well, no, we count all those surfaces as going, as flowing into the basin or flowing off the property, depending on how the slope of the land goes. And we've got to take that into account. So if the houses hit the ground and flow off the edge of the property to our analysis point without being intercepted, then we've got to calculate it that way. And so then we've got to over mitigate somewhere else to account for that because you're not going to catch every bit all the way around the whole perimeter.
Not at all, it's just.
But yeah, those are, those, the driveways.
Containing and moving it across, uh, 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 okay. Some, some will be traveling across permeable, some will be traveling across impermeable areas. That's what it comes down to.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll ask Cal a question, too. So it seems like the addition of this wet basin to me, you know, was a, was a change, a significant change from what I thought was going to happen. And I'll ask you this, and I don't know if you can propose it to the applicant or not. If you took these two units away, now I'm concerned about these units on a neighborhood basis, okay, separate from everything else because of the neighbors and how close they are. If, if those two were removed, would that, could you change the shape of that and get that so it's out in this area and away from the buffer zone? Would that make a substantial improvement? That would make a big change to me. That would be a change that would decrease a little density and also give you the opportunity to move that out.
Honestly, moving the one, moving the one house might help us, the uphill house. The other, the house in front's not going to help us, it's too far below.
This one?
I'm, I'm sorry, too far above it. That one's not going to help us because we won't get anything to float to that, it's too high up the slope, whereas the other one might. So 16 might help. Because that's closest to the basin and it's lower.
So by reconfiguring.
But that basin's downsold considerably from where those houses are.
But did you have to consider the butter's land in your calculation for this, only the, the land that you're developing?
We also considered the embers.
We did?
We also considered the embers.
You have to consider the embers.
Yeah.
But if there was no development here, oh.
So I'm saying if, if, if he agreed to get rid of lot 16 and we could reconfigure that basin, we could, it would make a significant difference in the stormwater, yeah, probably.
So that's.
But 17 doesn't help us, it's too far up sore.
Concur, Mr. Engineer.
Is that 285?
Yeah, 285.
This is 29?
84.
Okay.
It goes down like a.
Yeah, I just, I couldn't.
This is 278, it's existing at 278 or roughly. So that to me would represent a good compromise if it's possible. I don't know if it.
You can look at it.
Remove 16 or, and we 17 where it is?
If possible, to me, away, excuse me.
I stopped on your foot, I'm sorry. I don't want to lose 17 if it doesn't help us.
Well, it may not help you, but it may help my vote because I'm concerned with trying to take some feedback from the neighbors and how they're affected and whatnot by the closeness of these units to wrapping around. This, this particular person has picked up two units here and two units there where there only existed one single family home here. So what I'm asking for is a consideration of a compromise on the wet basin and the unit count, the density count, which I know you're entitled to, you don't have to remind us. And maybe that offsets the intrusion into the buffer zone at the same time. I don't know if anyone else has any thoughts on that, that's just my own idea, so I haven't talked to anybody about it. And I think that helps with a compromise for this particular tightness over here that exists. And maybe gives you the, a chance to relook at the, the sheeting action there and, you know, the overland flow into that basin. And that accomplishes a lot because it, it opens up this whole avenue back here potentially if, if somebody wanted to walk back there in the buffer zone and cuts down on that clearing that's done back there to build the basin. So I'm trying to accomplish a few things at the same time here because the existing tree line is, you know, way out here somewhere, isn't it? So it kind of pulls it away from the clearing requirement of the tree line as well.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it would.
So that's.
Maybe concentrate the stormwater farther back on the property away from Littleton Road.
I was coming off of, it's, it's.
Yeah.
Anyway, so.
Yeah.
So what I'd like to say is I'll look at, I'll look at 16, see if we can get that out of there. If it's advantageous from a stormwater standpoint, um, I'll look at 17. I'd hate to lose a lot when we're well below the lot count.
It also gives you a chance to.
If it doesn't help us.
See this little arrangement here when you come in, how you've got the driveways, which I think is kind of cute, you know, the single driveway to the garages? That would give you a chance to do the same thing in the next two lots, aiming them together in the, in a, in a, eliminate that piece of pavement.
We actually had them like that and from a stormwater standpoint.
So you can almost kick these two this way as.
Actually, yeah.
Do you have our revised grade thing?
You okay with this question?
This is, uh, no, it, it's.
Should have gone to the.
No, it's fine. Well, you, you are a designated engineer.
I'm not an engineer.
I know.
Doesn't need an engineer.
You're a designated engineer.
So I just wanted to look at these, so that didn't change, we kept that the way it was. We changed some grading.
Yeah, right. Go ahead.
When we get to, to that, I'll talk about that, but.
So this would be 17 and this would be 16?
Yeah. And what we end up doing, just to explain it to you, is we flock these from the other in order to get this driveway shortened.
Yep. The garage from this side to that side.
Per the DBW.
That was a DBW, uh, fire department DBW's request. Um, one of the, yeah, chief's request.
Either way, it's okay.
Yeah.
So that's my effort at coming to a conclusion that I could then endorse this with that change and then say, okay, you know, we've done our job, we've kind of concurred that we've minimized the intrusion into the buffer zone, we've minimized some of the requirement for the density.
I just want to preface this information, you know, the way that the wet basin is shaped, you know, the way it is.
Lined up with this, take this whole hill.
You know, the most wet.
I see.
Stormwater runoff. And we start changing the configuration of it, we can try to get it out of the buffer as much as we can, but I can't guarantee that it's going to be out of it 100%.
I, I think that's appreciated.
I think the effort is.
Yeah, no, we won't, I guarantee you, we won't be able to get it out 100%.
Yeah. But if it go into a kidney shape or something like that, where it would be, you know.
We will make a good faith effort to get much of it out this weekend.
I really was confused about the fact that you had to pick up this area as well. That's what I was confused about was that you had to address, that if that distance were limited to this distance, see, by showing that neck going out like this, you're saying to me basically that I need to pick all this up and, or some part of this, half this lot, let's say.
Right.
But if you could neck it down, then it could potentially go forward as well and get, or wrap it, go like this.
Right.
You know, something like that.
It would probably be more like.
We won't know until we start to look at the number.
And stormwater is really kind of an art, it's hard to predict.
And it's a theory, I know it's a theory, it's, it's based on modeling, it's.
Yeah. It does, it's oftentimes, it's the exact opposite, how you think things are going to work as well.
You can see my concern that the impact here is something I wasn't expecting, I guess, from the preliminary, from the, whatever you want to call it, to now. And I concur, you know, maybe the board should have brought it up earlier, much how we could handle it because we were doing a lot of other stuff and I don't feel like we were lacking what we were doing, but that's my question and if anyone else on the board has a concept other than that, think about it, you could come up with.
Currently, just to check, the outlet control system and the spillway system, is that actually physically connected to the wet basin in the back? If you get to it, okay, thank you.
Right. Just outfalls.
It's just an outfall.
Catches.
And that's, I, I see the word outlet control. Sometimes it's that six foot high.
Yeah, no, no.
Concrete. Looks like a pillbox.
Yeah.
For those of us who all know nothing what a pillbox was.
Especially in this particular case here where it's nearly based on modeling or whatever the case might be, I'm guessing, like, maybe there's more, I think you have more flexibility here because of the sheet flow type rather than that. That's a definite deal, you can't change that, you've figured it out, you've gone through all those numbers and so forth, so.
All right, we'll look at that. While we're, got this plan out, let me just talk to you about grading a little bit. As you effectively pointed out in the last, in our last meeting, we were talking about slab-on-grade foundations, or slab-on-grade foundations, which we will have to do over most of the site. But in the case where you get to something like this, where you could put a basement in and not dig down into the ground to do it.
Those are, those are one, those are.
It's going to be a walkout, yeah.
Yeah, um, the, uh, sorry, the lines, there's a.
Grading, yeah, those are both grading lines.
One foot, right?
One footers.
The one foot lines.
Do you happen to know just for minutes reading what lot numbers are going to be? Because I really just can't.
Here, hold on a second.
Be grading on that side.
I mean, so those are lots six, seven, eight, and nine, possibly.
Yeah, yeah.
What you started with five.
You've got to add lot numbers to this, you turn that off.
Five through nine.
What is it?
Five through nine.
Five, six, seven, eight, and nine.
So in some cases, what we'll do here, we've actually.
Is that a walkout?
There may be either a walkout basement or a half basement, something to this effect.
Got it.
And so this may be part of the house and this may be the other part of the house.
Solid wall down the middle.
A solid wall down the middle so that, you know, as soon as you start getting into, and this will be something they determine in the field while they're digging, while they're looking at the soils and.
Oh, I see.
They're going to know it's wet, they're not going to want to de-water to put a foundation in the ground. But it didn't make sense to add eight feet of filler on the back so we could put a slab-on grade.
Right.
All right, so that didn't make any sense at all. So in a couple of places, like with this garage, it's just going to have a, it's just going to have a wall there, there's really nothing we can do about that. We tried to minimize that situation everywhere else, I think we got away from it everywhere else, it's just that one garage. But if it saves us a whole bunch of fill in the backyard and allows us to not disturb and cut more trees than we have to, then it's worth doing.
Do these units up here, could they have full basements? Are you, are you going to even up this spot?
Um, they might, I mean, there's a lot of fill being added, there may be a couple that they can do a basement.
It's not really.
Or they could do a four for crawl space and just get the utilities down there.
Do any of the, do we know if any of the properties on that, that front on Littleton Road have basements? I just.
They all do.
I think they do.
They do, okay. And, and you're constantly moving water out of them?
Sorry?
I don't have a pump.
Yeah. I grew up in a house in Belmont that had water five or six times a year. Some pump.
Yeah.
Well, we have problems, you know.
I got a sun pump runs almost constantly.
Yeah, so, thanks guys, yes.
Couple of things. One is that I do think that this is the kind of compromise that is in the spirit of the intention of flexibility as an exchange here, where we understand where, that, that what works for both. I mean, I think that this is an effective compromise suggested by Mr. Diskin, where we can get much less of this basin in that buffer zone, uh, and you still get 18 units. I think that's a very reasonable quote flexibl, that's a demonstration of flexibility, I think is appropriate, that's inconsistent with the spirit and intent of OSRD. The other comment I want to make is, this isn't just about, um, conformance with the bylaws that we have, there's, there's something else going on here, which is that everything that touches on water is going to be particularly sensitive. We've already heard from a butter's saying that they're already experiencing water problems and property is right next door. So I think there's an especial acute attention to water, water management in every dimension with this, and I think we just can't lose sight of that.
Oh, we haven't, I guarantee, I mean, that, that extensive stormwater system basically attests to that fact. And pretty much any project we do these days, stormwater is the number one determining factor for configuration, how things work, stormwater and septic systems.
Welcome to population density.
Yeah.
Could you imagine trying to do this without, without a wastewater facility available to you?
No, we wouldn't, there'd be no way. The OSRD would be out the window because.
Exactly, exactly, especially when that virus is overdesigned.
Well, you do monitor systems, but you need lots of room.
Exactly. Exactly, um, are there other issues about this topic, I'm, I'm gonna wash the clock a little bit before.
Yeah, I could read the finding that I just, you know, the loss of the Saff report, which I think still holds even with the compromise that we just worked out, you know, that, you know, the applicant will be looking into, so I'll just read my motion, and, you know, I'll maybe add a little few comments about how I believe it meets what we just discussed. Page six, the air planning board finds that one, the air planning board concurs with the recommendations of the Air Conservation Commission on the conservation analysis pursuant to section ten point one, three, B, three, and four of the air zoning bylaw, with the caveat that it may not be possible to completely relocate the area of stormwater basins outside of one hundred-foot wetland buffer zone, however, the planning board recommends that efforts be made to minimize this occurrence, and I believe that what we just discussed is an attempt to minimize that occurrence. Two, the air planning board agrees with the determinations of areas of high, medium, and low conservation value as identified in a study dated November second, two thousand and eighteen by Othrow Associates, and third, the air planning board finds that a direct, and this is something we haven't discussed yet, not merely an easement, connection to the open space be provided so that residents of the homes on the western side of the subdivision can access the open space without trespassing over their neighbor's law. I know that was in the Conservation Commission recommendations, that a direct little alley be made from that road to the, the open space over here, you know, that's more than just an easement over a lot, that there be like a little alley.
So, couple of things about that.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Calvin, if I may, I don't do it very often, I never do it at home, and when we get to that part of the conversation, I wanted to open that up to the board, because I've been, I've been heard to say that I think there are things that have overreached in other situations, situations of a solar farm where we can't put trees and we can't, it's a hundred-foot setback and you can't touch the setback, I think that's overreaching, so I would like the board to consider this, just be open-minded about it, okay? We've, in the past, we have precedent, I've sat on the board before, where we have asked for space to be set aside, and I am all about complete streets, I'm all about neighborhoods and stuff, in this situation, I think I would be hard-pressed to agree that space be set aside beyond an easement, I'm just gonna say that, we didn't get it next to the high school, we'd have a hard time getting it here.
We haven't asked.
I've just, but we're also, we can't discuss this outside of the board, so, okay, I'm gonna, thank you, Calvin, I did, I did cut you off, and now, my guess is if sixteen moves, is the lot sixteen we just discussed?
Yeah.
If that's our reconfiguration, it's becoming a movement.
Kind of possibility, yeah.
Right, right.
And the other, the point that I was gonna make is that at the last meeting, we talked about an easement along this here where we have a stormwater easement, but we also talked about, I believe it was this driveway, and it could easily, just as easily be that driveway of allowing people to use that driveway as, at the end of the driveway, where it's a common driveway anyway, so you don't feel like you're walking in somebody's backyard, and in fact, you could have an easement down both those driveways if you wanted to.
And, and the only thing, in order to create it in perpetuity, some sort of signage or something that would.
Sure, and you could put that signage, say, you know, access to the open space, and have a trail that starts right at the end of the driveway.
Just like signs, but this is the thing where.
And I, I think that'd be perfectly adequate in this case, I don't think, you know, we always try to avoid having a parcel of land that nobody owns or takes care of.
It could be connected somehow.
Well, this is, yeah, this is the other, the other thing I was thinking about, and, you know, we, we have a situation here where we're, the intention is to allow people back into the open space, the opposite of that is you're inviting people to go into what some might consider their private area, their backyard, which we want to avoid also, because not only would it negative, not only would it have an impact upon the residents of this development, or subdivision, have an impact on the residents currently living in the area, I mean, the pluses and the minuses there is, you can go in your backyard and pretty much do what you want, because ain't nobody there, it will change unfortunately, that's what happens with density in development, but let's also not tell everybody, come on back, we also don't want to restrict access in for the work that has to be done in order to maintain the systems that are going to protect the property from the design standpoint.
And that's, that's a good point, any.
Sorry to.
You're not.
Potificate here, guys, but I deal with this all the time.
Yeah, you're absolutely right, you're not just inviting the neighborhood back there, you're inviting anybody in the town of air that that land is owned by.
I'm working on a project now that I worked on a decade ago, and the intention a decade ago is still impossible to enforce.
I would suggest that if you did a little signage, and at the end of that, if we showed a trail going to the open space that got built off the end so that it was clear to anybody going down there that there's a trail there and it's intended for your access, then I think you wouldn't have any conflicts with the neighbors.
And it would impact one or two, or depending on the number of lots that it goes through, it just have to, have to be carried with the closing of the lot.
Right, yeah, you'd have to make it a form.
So we'd have to go back and disagree with this particular note that we've done in the conservation, by the Conservation Commission, which says this is important.
This is why I'm raising it now, okay?
It's important that the connection.
It's, I think the intent is to create a situation where people can use the space, but I don't want the intent to create a situation where the space becomes cut off and can't be, i- it's just, it's a double-edged sword.
Well, yes.
You gotta allow people, we want to allow people in, we wanna direct people in, we don't want to adversely affect any more so than the folks in the neighborhood, now and in the future.
And I, I think this is better going down the driveway, because if you go between two lots and you make it a grass strip and you say, somebody owns this, they're still gonna think it's their lot.
Exactly.
Plus, the, the question of maintenance of that grass strip, people might decide not to mow it for a summer, and somewhere like this, the grass will be eight feet high.
Or, or at my house, something will get planted, yes, Mr..
Something I want to bring up too, is that as a planning board, we're obligated not to just to look at the design, but anticipate what this is, what this means to this town, ten, twenty, thirty, forty years, right?
Do our best.
And a subdivision is in fact a de facto mini neighborhood, okay, and in this case, and we're seeing more of these, we have a mini neighborhood on a major thoroughfare, Littleton Road is not an insignificant road, it's gonna have a lot of traffic, right, correct? I look at this and I go, okay, we can anticipate, say, eighty, eighteen to twenty families, whatever, you know, units are ultimately decided on, this way it looks like, it looks like it's designed and intended for people with children, and I have to ask, where do the kids go? And that's why some kind of access to open space is gonna be pretty damn important, because otherwise, they're kind of bottled in to the subdivision, right? You got a major road there, it's not like a little community, micro-community on certain residential streets, we're okay, the residential streets is low traffic, you don't have those kind of concerns, but we can anticipate these kind of concerns when you develop something off a major road like that, and I think we have to anticipate that as a real need, I think we are answerable to those families that come in and go, wait a minute, did anyone think about how this place was gonna be lived?
So, so let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I appreciate that, all right, this is not going to be an HOA, my understanding of any sort.
We don't know anything.
I don't believe it is, no.
We don't, we don't believe it.
No, wait.
This is, so this is being brought to us as a single-family ownership, effectively some number of lots, call it seventeen or, what, twenty lots, each lot will actually go to record with the, the registry deeds, at some point, if we're going to give them, if we're going to require access, somebody has to own that lot, that access space, okay? We just went through this over here on, off of East Main, excuse me, Jess, okay, so you don't wanna give space that no one's, as Calvin pointed out, no one's gonna take care of, you wanna give space that might have a double use, which is get us into maintaining the, what, the way, typically what's happening is, you have to go into the basins and do O and M on, a couple times a year, once a year, whatever it is, go in and change out the, if they're rain gardens, they gotta get rewooded, shit, they get, things have to happen in them, okay, so if you just say, oh, it's over there, and don't provide access, and the lot lines come together, what's, what's the easement called under duress, I forget what it's called.
Oh, wow.
A long-term use of a piece of property.
Yeah, yeah.
It's adverse possession, you need a period of time to get adverse possession.
Twenty years.
However, it's very, very difficult for the developer to say, oh, that hundred-feet-deep, ten-foot-wide strip doesn't belong to anybody, good luck to you, so designing it over a driveway makes sense in practicality, am I answering your question?
I, I, I don't care how.
Yeah.
It gets connected, but I'm, I'm saying the importance of it being connected is what I'm concerned about.
And one of the challenges for this lot is it does sit on a state road.
It does sit on a state road, and I wanna say about the HOA part, thank you.
Yeah.
But we also got six common driveways, how, what's, they are common, what are the provisions, then, for how those are maintained or plowed, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera?
And we do that just the way you do in, in towns like Harvard or other towns where they've got, common driveways are very common.
Yes.
Um, there's an agreement written between those two homeowners, and they share equally or proportionally in the maintenance of the driveway, including plowing and repairs.
Or if you live with me, I get, I get a willing take care of it, excuse me, we got a question from the back, Jess.
Yeah, just, just a quick question, my understanding, I might have misunderstood, at our conservation meeting, was that there wasn't a homeowners association, because maintenance in particular of the big stormwater basin and the four bay was not gonna be taken over by the DPW, so who's doing that maintaining?
I guess that.
More than they maintain.
Yeah, so, so for the people at home, I use HOA as an expression, as a general term of, probably the wrong term, Jess, typically in a condominium or a, or homeowner's development, there is common land that's, there's common responsibility, owned by everybody, everyone has a proportion share, this is being brought to us as a single-family development, it may or may not be a homeowners association of some sort, there are often homeowners associations that take care of, in this case, the, the road will always be town-owned, but it takes care of road maintenance, takes care of landscape and stuff like that for areas that aren't necessarily belonging to an individual lot, but my understanding from this and everything I've seen, I think is going to be some number of individually owned lots, and what'll happen is, neighbors get together, and someone always feel like they're getting chipped out of doing the work, or doing more work, but that's typically how it works.
So, I know why Jess is confused, because I did say that in the meeting, and it's probably premature to say that, because I'm not sure how Mark Wetzel will wanna handle these basins, some DPW directors, when they take over the road, they take over the basin as well, and they say, I'm gonna do it, because if I don't do it, nobody's gonna do it.
This has been happening here in air.
Um, or some other, other DPW directors say, I'm taking the road and that's it, and I'm not taking anything else, you guys deal with the rest of it, and I'm not sure which way we're gonna end up with this.
Um, and I, I think that's fair, and, yeah, because we do have developments here in town, I'm not gonna name them on TV, that have allowed their basins to not be maintained, simply because the people who moved in have sold and left, no, no one intends not to maintain them, and then they have a stormwater event, or a sewer, a, a common sewer system event, and. I have a residence who bought a house with a pit in the front yard, and the last owner said, don't worry about it, you never have to think about it, well, yeah, you do, it should pump up, and so anyway, I don't wanna.
And a lot of times, a DPW director will wanna take that responsibility, because if something does go wrong, they get the call anyways.
Yeah, and you don't want people putting stuff into the system, you want, you want someone visiting them, DPW visits every one of our sewer pump stations every single day.
Right.
You wanna do it, so, okay, um, so, getting us back to the recommended motion.
Thank you, one more thought.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Diskin.
Mr. Chairman, so, one of the few things that we do have in the old subdivision regulations is that we do, we do have an opportunity there to ask for some kind of recreational open space area, they, they talk about both in the old subdivision regulations, which still apply, so I concur with, you know, Jonathan's thought, and, you know, maybe there's a way to look at that area again and connect all the possibilities, you know, with the, extending the shape of the open space and bringing it to the road, I mean, it's just a question of meets and bounds, right, and just the shape of it.
Well, then.
This became open space, this piece here.
Lot sixteen and seventeen.
Lot sixteen and seventeen, and a neck, I don't know if you can bring a neck down to the road, and it's, or you'd impact the size of the driveway.
Drive, screw up the driveway.
Something, but if you brought the whole thing down, it even gives you the, the same concept of an easement through the driveway to the open space is what we're getting at, in some place for people, it's a valid point that if families move in here, there should be some recreation area other than their own yards, maybe that, maybe there's no way to do it, but I'm just on board with any increase in the open space, so potentially this could be calculated to add on to that, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. So, in front of us, we have a recommend, a recommended finding motion, do you wanna edit it or leave it at this length?
Oh, well, it sounds like so far the board is leaning towards not requiring an exclusive opening, that, that they're fine with the easement.
I would ask us to think strongly about that.
Um, that's what you suggested, so if that was the case, we could strike number three on my draft finding, and the other.
And I would hope that their proponent would consider including an easement in it.
Oh, we definitely, yeah.
Thank you.
You need some action.
We see that.
It's gonna be either an easement or.
This is, this is what we agree on.
That's your time, I understand.
Either an easement or a direct connection.
Thank you, yeah, okay, I, I just have, I have a difficulty creating a piece of land that no one owns.
I mean, we're probably, we're gonna have two easements.
Someone's gonna own it eventually.
Yeah, exactly.
The open space is gonna be owned by some entity.
Exactly, go ahead.
We will have two easements, we'll have the one down that driveway, and then we'll have the one between the two lots to get to maintenance.
And part of that, same question now that dawned on me again, was that the DPW had a concern for maintenance in the basins, and we can provide the same easement to DPW for maintenance.
You're right, if they have a road or.
Chip out three, you know.
Can I please ask, Calvin? Calvin?
Yes.
Can I just brought up the DPW's request for easement for maintenance, is that accomplished by the first easement on the property?
Yes.
And that's agreeable to the DPW?
Yes, that's gonna be between lots six and seven.
Thank you.
Is that right?
It's up here.
I know I should be asking Mark, but in our conversation yesterday, it didn't come up.
Yeah, between, no, sorry.
No, six and seven would be down lower.
It's low, yeah, I think it's gonna be up above between.
Probably between nine and ten, is that what you think, Calvin?
And the other possibility is that this easement, that lets you to the open space and this, they also, I don't know if you need maintenance here, you probably do.
Sure.
That could provide the same.
It would only provide you the easement.
You kinda kill my, kill two or three birds at once.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, my recommendation, if, Mr. Chairman, if it's possible, would be that our town planner and representative of the Conservation Commission, the conservation agent, discuss this again, and we create mutually agreeable findings and vote on it.
I'm open to that, Mr. Chairman.
Any comment from, any member of the Conservation Commission that might be present about that?
Okay, can you restate that?
I was, I, I was just making a recommendation that, based on what we said tonight, that Monica, Ashenbo, and, and Joanne, and potentially the Conservation Commission, get together and, and potentially amend this to the language that we've agreed on, basically, and then we can vote on it, and say, this is what we all agreed on, if you think that makes sense.
Also the conservation findings.
Couple of findings, right, so they're, they're basically, they've got the recommendation and the findings, so we could put it in a motion and say, here's what we agreed on, that's what I'm trying to get at, rather than take this document and say, take out that sentence, take out this sentence, you know.
Calvin, you have a question?
My only comment is, you're making it harder than it needs to be.
Yeah, maybe.
I mean, they gave you your recommend, this is what they'd like to see, this is their wish list, you take three of them, you throw out one.
I was, I was actually gonna recommend that we amend, we amend this.
Well, I, I.
Well, we could strike number three, and then the easement access would still be applicable as proposed on the plan, so I think number three in my draft motion would just go away, which called for a more direct connection, it's not an easement, so if you take that out, then the rest of it still stands, they minimize, they, they attempt to minimize the stormwater basins in the buffer zone, and you concur with the findings of the Conservation Commission.
So I'm gonna take a shot at reordering number three.
Sure.
The air con, the air planning board finds that a direct connection to the open space be provided so the residents of the homes on the western side of the subdivision can access the, I would take the western.
Just the whole subdivision, yeah.
So that the residents of the, the residents may, residents may access the open space without trespassing over their neighbor's lawns, and I actually would recommend through easement is acceptable, and a minimum of one, because we've talked about two.
Yeah, that'll be two.
We, and I appreciate that, but you're gonna, you're gonna have to move six and, you're gonna have to move sixteen and seventeen, you got two, two?
The one to the, the end between, between lots ten and eleven.
I got it.
The easement between ten and eleven is already on our, our plan for the.
You can do this for one time, I can do.
So, and the easement, the expected location of the easement would be ten, eleven, and sixteen, seventeen roughly?
Ten and, and I'm, if I'm putting it in the motion, we gotta make sure it's, you're a hundred percent correct, because that would be the motion.
And we have to say what's currently indicated as lots sixteen and seventeen.
Fourteen.
So, it's, it's gonna be read in the motion, so it's when we go into the, so this approval to prove, so I just wanna make sure these are a hundred percent correct.
Well, you can't be a hundred percent correct until we reconfigure the lots. Well, you can't be 100% correct until we reconfigure the lots.
That's right. I have a feeling we're going to pause on this for a minute.
Yeah, so all we'll do is we'll just say, and then as part of whatever approvals that get done, it'll be a condition where those easements are.
We're going to see each other again.
And just say, "No, one easement."
We're going to see if, yes, I'm sorry. Yeah.
We have three members of the board present.
Yes.
If we decide to vote on any motion tonight, is that the majority of the three that passes the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Simple majority. However, I think we just, while you were thinking about that, I think we just got to the point where the lots are going to be reconfigured.
Well, not on the area.
In the example. Is that going to impact this motion?
We're not going to.
Okay.
We'll do it as a condition.
I think approval.
We would input the lot numbers then, because then we'll have the lots.
So the finding can be a little more...
General.
General.
Do we have to vote on the finding tonight? Because it'd be nice to see the reconfiguration and affirmatively see it.
We've been putting off the Conservation Office for so long.
However, I really would like to not put us in the position where we've been before, which is we've made a decision, a change has happened and we've had to...
Right.
Sorry, guys, let's, let's get... The reason we're here at night is because we can't get together during, during, between meetings and discuss all this, okay? And so it's somewhat of a, okay. That would, I believe, take care of the Conservation Commission's issues.
What's the motion is...
We need to, yeah, once the motion is... We haven't voted on the motion. And Heather was going to read us the actual language of item three.
A direct connection to open space so that residents may access open space without trespassing over neighboring lots with a minimum of one easement.
I would.
That's what you said.
Yep.
You might, so.
Mm-hmm.
Right. So, agree with what you want to amend?
We're just want to be sure that, so I just want to get this boxed in where we get this easement here and then this is just left out.
It's a minimum of one. So when you go through and they reconfigure, if they do reconfigure this, this is just the motion, so they have a minimum of one. If you cross more than one, that's where you put that in your condition of approval. Okay?
I get it.
I wouldn't mind if you said two, because we're going to need one for each basin.
Let's just do it. And we have to understand, we have to go back and forth.
Very good.
Yeah. Minimum of two easements. And does the word "direct" give the flexibility necessary that it could imply easement as well? Do we need to make an explanation or is that from design?
We strike the words not merely an easement.
Beautiful. I just want to make sure. I think someone needs to make a motion, right?
Yes, please.
And then read, and should I read the correct language in the motion to, and then you guys can, please help me out. So I, I recommend that, what's it, that we accept the finding from the Conservation Board, that, and it says, "Finds, we find that the Air Planning Board concurs with the recommendations of the Air Conservation Commission and the conservation analysis pursuant to section 10 dot 1 dot 3B dot 3 and 4 of the AZB, with the caveat that it may not be possible to completely relocate the area of stormwater basins outside the 100-foot wetland buffer zone. However, the Planning Board recommends that efforts be made to minimize the occurrence. Two, the Air Planning Board agrees with the determination of areas of high, medium, and low conservation value identified in a study dated November 2nd, 2018 by Expo Associates. Three, the Air Planning Board finds that a direct connection, that two..." Please help with the language here, that direct...
Direct connection to open space.
To the open space be provided so that residents may access the open space without trespassing over the neighbor's lots, comma, colon, Heather, with her management two...
Can I make a suggestion?
Please, sir.
It's confusing to say, it's confusing...
Make a motion and then you could go.
It's confusing to say, "Without trespassing over neighbor's lots," because an easement is going to be on both lots.
It's not, right.
So I would stop after "open space."
Right. We're going to use the word easement.
Okay, so help me fix this, please.
Direct connection to open space.
The Air Planning Board finds that a direct connection, that two direct connections to the open space be provided through easement.
Through easement.
So that the residents of the homes can access the open space.
Period.
Period. Grew up in the house of a real estate lawyer.
So that's an official motion now?
Yes.
It's a move, do I have a second?
No. Second.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Opposed? No objection, no objections. Thank you.
Okay, next, item, so, item number two on my general list is act on the waiver request. So on page three of my staff report, you see the, the section of the bylaw, the required requirements of the bylaw or the subdivision reg, whatever is applicable, the requested variants or, I should say, modifications from the applicant and DPW comments on their recommendations.
So if I may, section four dot A dot two dot A.
Correct.
Streets cross sections required are in a roadway 50 foot wide, shall be 36 with 36 feet wide with four foot sidewalks, there's two three foot grass planting strips. The request was a 40-foot wide roadway consisting of a 24-foot road, one five-foot sidewalk, and two two-foot grass planting strips. I'm curious about the two two-foot grass planting strips.
Well, you really get one two-foot grass planting strip and you get one seven-foot grass planting strip.
Exactly. The, my, my understanding also that, and I think, did you put this in the plans that the request is to make the sidewalk a little farther around the cul-de-sac?
Yeah.
And that a three-foot grass planting strip was a, was a request of the DPW?
No, we didn't. We didn't do that. In order to do that, what we would end up doing is shifting the roadway over a foot to do that. We could, we could make that two-foot strip or three-foot strip, right? We shift the roadway over. And so the center line of the road will not be the center line of the right of way, is what I'm saying.
I am assuming the DPW had no trouble with having me do this recommendation.
I wouldn't think they care.
Yeah.
I'm not sure they understood that's what we need to do.
Two, two-foot grass strips just don't work.
No, I agree.
They, they fail, they don't grow, it's, it's, they're horrible.
So we'll have...
You'll, you'll...
One three-foot grass strip and one four-foot grass strip.
Yeah, okay.
And we agree with the 24 feet, right? We agree with the 24?
Yeah.
Kosher, kosher?
So you're doing one...
Yeah, go ahead.
Three foot and one four foot.
I want to get one more thought here. So one thing that didn't come up on the discussion of the cross-sections, and I am concerned about it, you alluded to it earlier a little bit, is the fact that we're sheathing it across the road.
Right, rather than crown.
So my preference, and I would, I'm not sure where it shows in our subdivisions, but I believe we do show some kind of a typical crowned road with drainage on each side, so I'd like to have the applicant, we change this to a crowned road with drainage on both sides, and then I'd obviously agree with the 24 foot and the five-foot sidewalk and the three-foot planting strip. But I don't know, what's your comment on that?
My comment on that is, it's done basically to minimize the amount of infrastructure that has to be installed and has to be maintained over time. And that the length of the road is, is short enough and the slope of the road is shallow enough so that you're going to have effective capture of stormwater. It's going to run in the gutter on the right side of the road and be picked up by the basins at the end of the road. I think if the DPW had an issue with that, they would, they would have said something about it. They did talk about catch basins, but they didn't, they didn't have, take issue with this.
Separately, and they said their preferences for a crowned road, but they didn't address it because it wasn't in a waiver request at all. So since it was not a waiver request, they didn't respond to it because when they were asked to respond to it, but...
Do you remember if it's a standard detail as a crowned road?
I'm pretty sure it is. Standard language is not a detail. There's a language in there.
Standard language.
Right. It does suggest that we put, you know, two catch basins, one, one on each side of the road. It would suggest a crowned road.
That would suggest a crowned road.
Yeah. You would have to be crowned road.
So I'd like to amend that so that we go back to a standard crowned road.
So that's just a denial of that.
And...
Well, it's just not because we...
No, it's not. You get the 24 feet, you get the five-foot sidewalk.
No, you don't. I think we, you know, do you want, do you want to make a motion?
With a caveat that we add a crowned road instead of, and the drainage that goes with it.
Exactly. No, we can, we can make a motion on this and approve it, change it.
No.
I, I'm just, having been involved in snow management for most of my, longer than half my life now, I prefer crowned roads just because no, no freeze. That's all.
And it's nasty here.
Well, you can just tell us that and we'll make those changes.
I appreciate that.
You don't have to work it into this one thing.
Okay, so we don't need to bring that up in the motion for the waiver?
That's right, that's right, make that up.
So I think the, so the way, so the motion to approve the waiver of the three, of a minimum three-foot grass planting strip?
Well, I think that's too possible. We have to approve the roadway width of 24 feet.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion that the Planning Board approve the change to section four A two dot A, streets cross section for the subdivision John Carroll Reserve, to allow roadway width of 24 feet with one five-foot sidewalk, one three-foot planting strip.
Did you...
The one three?
Well, so one four foot and then...
The one five-foot sidewalk.
Whatever the balance is.
One three-foot planting strip.
Whatever the balance is.
On the other side of the road, we don't have to contend with it. It's going to be the net result.
It'll be somebody's...
Do we need to include the right of way in your, in your motion?
Don't, don't amend that. That's good. Oh, excuse me, you're right.
Well, the right of way is in there.
Yeah, see, I just wanted to include it in your motion.
Yeah, and then that, to allow the 40-foot right of way. Roadway width 24 feet, five-foot sidewalk, one three-foot planting strip.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Section four dot B dot two, drainage, required pipe drainage shall be minimum diameter 15 inches.
So that the background on that is...
I'm just reading it, it sounds the same. Go ahead.
The background on that is 25-year storm and a small road like this typically doesn't require 15-inch pipe. A 12-inch pipe is adequate for a lot of it, although there is a portion of it that would be 15-inch for a 25-year storm. But it's a fairly small portion. So when he's talking about a pipe design for the 25-year storm, that's basically what we're proposing as well. But only sizing the pipe appropriately for each, each storm. But, and it's just to save, save a little bit of money on the pipe size, but it's not a big deal, so.
So we're coming out with 15-inch pipe?
Yeah, let's do it. We, what I understand from...
In bigger subdivisions, it could make a lot more difference.
Yeah.
I also understand the 15-inch is easier to maintain. That's what I heard from Mark, so.
No, that's because they're...
It also puts in line with, with what the Conservation Commission mentioned at the other hearing, that they prefer us to...
I mean, there's a whole discussion about hydraulics and pipe size and stuff like that we are not going to get into right now. Okay?
Do we need, do we need to do anything with that now? If we decide no, is it, do we think...
I spoke to Mark about this. He's, Mark Wetzel, he's requested a 15-inch pipe. It sounds like it's...
So you just deny it?
We just deny it.
You have to make a motion and then say no, right?
Mm-hmm.
So I'm sorry, what I call is a motion to, to move a motion to deny requested waiver applying to section four dot B dot two regarding drainage, requesting, the request is pipe drains sized to convey stormwater hydraulic gradient the crown of the pipe during the 24, 5-year design. I think the request is to adjust that.
To use a smaller pipe?
To use a smaller pipe and not be consistent 15 foot, 15-inch pipe. And we, where we find, and then do I have to say we make a mo, uh, I'm sorry, how do I finish that?
You just make a motion, deny the waiver.
That's it. I made a motion.
Deny the waiver to section five.
Second.
Four.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, section four dot B dot four, required drainage again. Catch bases shall be located on both sides of the roadway on continuous grades and intervals of not more than 400 feet. This one's going to change because of a crowned road.
Right, that's the one you deny because of the crowned road.
Yeah. So I would exercise, I would, I would entertain a motion to deny this waiver request.
I'll make a motion to deny the waiver request in accordance with section four dot B dot four drainage, that the request was provide a double grate catch basin on one side of the roadway within 400 feet from existing roadway, and one double grate catch basin at the sag of the cul-de-sac.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor? I'm sorry, aye, thank you. No discussion, great. Um, yeah, the waiver was section B dot J dot one, trees. And the original request was to provide, um...
Trees on one side instead.
The waiver was for one-side planting?
Right.
Okay. And the recommendation is to plant on both sides. So a motion to deny this...
If I, if I may.
Yeah.
So if the, if the trees are intended to be placed in the right of way, that would mean that you're going to put trees in that three-foot grass strip.
With the mailboxes.
Mailboxes.
We need to talk about that. We need to talk about mailboxes.
That's why we asked for that waiver. Do you sidewalk on one side trees anyhow?
Gotcha.
I think the conclusion here is that the tree planting would be just outside the, quote, "right of way," but would be on either side of the street. So, or either side of the right of way, or whatever we want to pronounce or spell it out, but I think that's the intent.
What is the distance length of the road again?
350 to 400.
Seven or eight trees.
It's only shown about six on one side. One, two, three, four, five, six. And the reason I think that this, oh, we haven't made a motion yet, but I was going to discuss it before the motion.
Please.
The, typically, when you do something that's new like this, the drawing will indicate a foliage that's quite large, you know, the circle drawn on the drawing, but in essence, the trees are pretty small.
Right.
So you really need to think about ways to spruce it up and putting trees on both sides of the street because of the chance of, you know, some growth in five or 10 years from now that provides shitty and, and, you know, anything else.
Did you guys go to the, do a landscape selection chart of any sort of tree yet? Not that far.
I know how it was worked on, did we get a typical landscaping plan done yet?
Uh, no.
You didn't do a plan schedule?
We're going to do it for an individual house.
Yep.
Okay. Show you typical house. We don't have it scheduled.
I think we do have two typical trees and the planning detail and the...
Yeah, you do, and these drawings, right.
Do you happen to recall what they are?
It's a five, five inch caliber.
Five inch.
No, five?
Five inch.
Huge, that's what it should be.
What's the dimensions of what, what species of five inch tree will be draining in?
Five foot maybe.
Two and a half inch.
Two and a half inch caliber.
I thought it was a five inch caliber.
And if it's two and a half inch caliber, you don't name the species.
Hecum and tree, we'll bring it in for you.
I don't know if we named the species, I think we do.
Uh, I think we did, yeah. Acer frumani, I don't know.
Sugar maple.
Yeah, I was going to say maple.
Chippirara, green spire.
Green spire, which is probably, it's a little leaf linden and a balayz mean.
Okay.
Two and a half inch caliber.
No, that acer frumani is not, it's not...
That's small.
That's something that helps.
Typical of this thing.
There you go. It's a maple.
The point is we, I think we use them on both sides of the street.
The maple grows pretty quickly, the linden, not so much.
Linden is nice though.
Yeah. The problem is when the linden's a beautiful big tree, that three foot's not going to be enough space for it.
So when I was first starting, I'll just digress for a minute, when I was first starting, I was working for a guy named Peter Rivenzi out in Malmster, he was building houses in a subdivision.
Yeah.
And, yeah, and he did a, he did crimson court, and he put crimson maples all along, and they were that big.
Yeah.
And they're like fifty feet apart, and if you drive down there now, they're huge, and there's just a line of them, of, on each side, all the way down, it's like, it's amazing.
Now, the, that's one of the reasons why some people actually think maples are...
They actually put them too close together, because now they've grown and they're almost touching each other.
Some people think maples are an invasive species, that certain maples are invasive species for that reason. It amazes me having, I just thank God you didn't say river birches. So, um...
Where are you guys?
I appreciate that they're going to be in a three foot space. My personal feeling is I think trees bring a feeling of a feeling of neighborhood.
Absolutely.
To the street.
Yeah. They don't have to be in the three foot space. It could be just out to, onto someone's lot, just off the right of, that's my concept anyway.
Okay.
Just says either side of the street.
One way, one way, the drip line's going to be underneath impervious surface, it's not perfect for a tree, but it is what it is. So I would...
Entertain a motion?
Say a motion to deny the waiver request.
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to deny the requested waiver that applies into section five dot J dot one regarding the trees, and that would be for a request to provide trees just on one side, and we're denying the request of just put trees on one side, and wish to confirm required trees on both sides.
Seconds.
To move and second to deny the waiver request, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And I think, you know, we could, we could use a little discretion and maybe put a couple of them around the cul-de-sac, they're showing now basically running, I'm not sure how that works, with the sidewalk going all around the cul-de-sac, but they're all shown now in the, basically the straighter part of the road, and maybe we could spread them out and put a couple around here, and that'd be the solution, you know, something.
Yes.
I, I don't want to mess up, I know we are, want to keep an eye on the clock, and I know that Mark has the schedule, but I was wondering when we should, because we just started talking about that right of way, and they talked about the mailboxes, would this be an appropriate time to raise the issue about the mailboxes or not?
Let's get through Mark's.
Let's do Mark's thing first.
All right, okay, that's fair enough.
That's fine.
Could you have me do that? All right, yeah, it's quarter of eight, and I don't, these next two items could take a while, but I wanted to say that there are two, two items that, that we flagged in the bylaw that I believe, you know, apply to the bylaw, and I know the applicant's engineer has some disagreement there, but this is section called land clearing and grading, section nine point six, the intent of which is to ensure that any work that's done in an up, I believe in an upland area, you know, undergo, undergo site plan review with special criteria to ensure that, you know, the tree cutting is done in a responsible manner, and erosion is controlled, and wildlife habitat is protected, and all of that. I know the bylaw in section ten point one states that OSRD is subject to that section and whatever, and for that reason, I, I believe, I would like to have legal counsel issue us an opinion, both for the land clearing section and grading, how it would or would not apply to the OSRD section, and OSRD subdivisions, as well as the requirement in the dimensional table that has to do with what I call lot open space, not the fifty percent open space is required, but the area within a lot that should be impervious.
Impervious.
Right. No, pervious, I should say, or green. So to that end, you know, I have drafted a letter to town council, and I've incorporated Cal Goldsmith comments into that letter, which, which I sent out as an email.
Did you send them in red?
Yes, yes.
Why did you pick red?
Well, I...
No, no, it was my mood at the time.
He's following my lead to color code things. That's a way to grab your attention.
I'm glad you got to say that, you just took it before the weekend, though.
Right, me too.
Yep. So, you know, we could, you know, discuss the, the pros and cons of this, and the purpose of that, and maybe what the Conservation Commission thinks or whatever, or, you know, we could say that, you know, we will send us out for an opinion from legal counsel, I will share that with the applicant, and the board of course, and I would request the legal counsel get that opinion to us in time for the first meeting in July, which is our next meeting.
As quickly as possible, I hope.
Yeah, obviously. July fourth is in there, so I'm not sure if she's working after that, but we would certainly want that in time, to make a determination as to whether a site plan, which could be heard concurrently, is something that we would require as part of this overall subdivision review or not. And unfortunately, you know, I believe that, you know, the bylaw as written is somewhat ambiguous in this regard, and...
So, well, I'm gonna, so, so I'm, I'm going to take a real chance here, okay? Because I did read through all of the bylaw sections, but I also read, I also had the pleasure of reading the emails back and forth, and not only Cal, did Mark send me a copy of it, and then send a copy to the board upon your request, he sent me a copy, called me to make sure I got it. Okay? So, um, but I want to back up just a second, and without getting into the heated part of the argument, if we can hear your statement on what it is, if it's any different than this, that's all I just want, because there are two sections, nine point six and land clearing and grading.
Let's start, start with that. I've said in the past that nine point six, basically what nine point six requires is the same process you go through when you're approving a subdivision, you're looking at the amount of clearing, you're looking at the amount of open space, you're looking at all, it's, it's basically, it's to handle erosion control, sedimentation control, stormwater management, controlling what happens on the site, making sure you're not impacting abutting sites, so it's completely redundant.
And this is during the construction process?
During the construction process, so, but, but we do it as a permit issue to make sure that when you do the construction, that it's done properly, you've got the right controls in place, all of the same stuff that we're doing with a subdivision. So my, my statement previously was, it's basically the same process, it's the same concerns, it's all the same things that we do with a subdivision, there's no added requirements there, which is why we could do it as concurrently and it wouldn't make any difference. So it's, what that was written for, in my opinion, is, it was written as a catchall for those projects that don't have an order of conditions, because CONCOM goes through that same process, that don't have an order of conditions, or that wasn't, weren't done as a subdivision. So there's certain, like if I own ten acres of land and I wanted to cut five acres of trees, and I had a wetland nearby, but I'm going to be outside the hundred foot buffer zone, so I'm not going to file for an order of conditions, and I just let the stuff run, I can contaminate the brook and everything else. So this says, no, 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 before you go do something like that, we're now requiring you come in, see us, and talk to us about how are you going to control the erosion before you go do something stupid and cause yourself a lot of grief and us a lot of harm to the resources, so...
Like cut all the trees in a solar field.
Yeah, no.
In a repairing zone in a solar field.
No.
I was not intended to hurt you, Calvin, but we learn, we learn, we learn from what happens, go ahead.
We do. So, so that's the first, that's the first thing, is it's, it's basically covered under the stuff that we're doing, and when you, when you read nine point six, that's why it basically says activities under exemptions, activities conducted under an earth removal permit under section nine point seven, or an order of conditions issued by the Air Conservation Commission. So it's basically saying, if you've already gone through the process with CONCOM, why do it again? And Mark's thought was, well, that only applies to the stuff that's in the buffer zone, but that's not true either, because if we make a filing with Conservation Commission, we don't come in and show them the buffer zone and say, this is what we're going to do in the buffer zone. We come in and show them the entire project, we show them everything, and when they write an order of conditions, it encumbers whatever we've asked for as part of that notice of intent. So if we ask for a notice of intent over the whole project, then that's what it encumbers, and it, it's a registry of, it goes out to the registry of deeds, it's put on the title until such time as it gets a substantive compliance. So while their narrow focus may be the wetlands and the buffer zone, they also have concerns about what happens on the rest of the site, as any good Conservation Commission would, because if you don't do it right on the rest of the site, sooner or later, it's going to flow into the buffer zone or the wetlands, and if that happens, if there's a runoff problem that goes into the buffer zone into the wetlands, once it hits the wetlands, then the commission can declare jurisdiction over the entire project. So it's not narrowly focused just on what happens in the buffer zone, it's the whole project, and I think that's when it says activities conducted under an earth removal permit or an order of conditions issued by the Conservation Commission, that's what they're talking about, and we certainly will be conducting this subdivision construction under an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission. So it was intended as a, as a, an exemption because it's redundant for no, no other reason. So that's my first argument. My second argument, I take you back to where it says the OSRD is allowed by rights, subject only to this section.
That may be the one that the attorney has to answer no matter what.
I just, it's the way it's written, it's what the words say.
I, I appreciate that.
Except it's wording earlier in the bylaw, too.
I mean, I talked about this.
It goes back and forth.
Madder words, it's early in the bylaws.
Both frank words, we're chewing our cabbage once tonight, guys, okay?
So that's, that's my case.
It's okay for us to be smiling and disagreeing.
Yeah, I agree.
Guys, I'm good with that.
I think the point of our, as a planning board, we have some very important issues to consider here, because this is the first OSRD we've done. So if it weren't for the fact that we had this number of different conditions on this plan, which we have to think about, we wouldn't be down this road, if it was all treed, and there was no wetlands, and so forth and so on. But because of the, it's the first one, I think we have to tread very lightly, and I like Rock's recommendation of clarifying these issues, because we want to establish these kinds of answers as we look at other ones in the future. So it's a good, in my judgment, it is, see, I interpret that sentence differently, so that's the reason, is I believe the activities excluded are the, the ones that are under the control of the conservation in the buffer zone, but we're responsible for the rest of the site, that's my interpretation, it's different from Cal's. So I think, and Mark is basically potentially down that same road, so I'm thinking that we, I'm, I'm gonna, I'd like to make a motion that we continue the meeting to the next planning board meeting, and in the meantime, that we contact, take the recommendation of our town planner, contact the town attorney, and the language that he chooses to ask for clarification on, on the outstanding things that we think are plan, are bylaw related.
Yes, and I will attach Cal's comments, which, you know, and, you know, is, to be fair, you know, I, you know, I believe, we have to be fair to everybody, and I'd like his side to be heard by council as well as, you know, what we think.
I also, I like the idea of going to town council, because I think, as you said, Mr. Diskin, it absolutely is imperative that everybody gets a clear understanding of what's required and what's not, and if it's clearly required, we will do it in the future.
And, 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 yeah, yes.
I like to play by the rules, I don't like to argue, I hate arguing.
I've seen, I've seen you make good and the rules got missed, so I, I have no trouble with that. And this brings up a point, which is really kind of interesting, because the line between the planning board and the other commissions here in town can be very, very gray sometimes.
Sure.
You know? And I think what we, what we can do is support, because as, it's, it's obviously to you now that we're starting to work to get, we're more focused on working together, with the planner, with the, with the, the agent, stuff like that, so it benefits everybody, most importantly, our townspeople, I believe. So, we're gonna ask for town council on that one, okay? The second one, which is straightforward, section ten dot two, is it? What's that, uh, OSRD only this section?
Yeah.
I need to ask that question.
Ten point one.
Ten point one, sorry.
Yeah, that's in my...
I just need to ask that question.
Yeah, that's, that's in there too, you know?
The only thing I'll say about that is it makes perfect sense, because you're saying for the rest of the bylaw, all the stuff that we require of the subdivision of lots everywhere else is set aside, because this is a special regulation, this is, and this is an animal unlike a normal subdivision, it's unlike any other normal development council, we've got our own set of rules for this one.
However, section ten, I believe, does not come with a table of definitions and some other things that are typically part of a zoning bylaw, and that's where I see a little bit of gray area.
That might be, go back to the drafters as well.
I, I, and, oh, that hurts.
No, I didn't mean you, I meant the attorneys.
I know, I know, as you know, I came, I came on board with this, this had been drafted for almost a decade by the time we got it together. So I'd like some clarity on that, quite honestly, because I do want to know when we're discussing open space, if we're discussing the same open space for all sections, even though the OSRD says only this section is applicable.
Well, and if you're going to hold us to the open space on a lot, then I get to take that open space and add it to the other open space.
Let's see what the attorney says, the definition of open space, which is no structure above.
You got it, you got it one way, you got it the other way.
Unfortunately, the existing definition includes both types of open space, which can be confusing, it talks about the general open space.
I'm watching the clock, okay? Even though it's led outside.
Before we make a motion to continue the hearing, I also want to give an update on the traffic study issue.
Yes, thank you.
DPW Superintendent Wetzel put me in touch with, I have his thing here somewhere.
The other possible project in that area.
Right, he put me in touch with Joseph Rowley, who's the Mass DOT, whatever his title is for this region of the state, and he said that they have a list of recommended engineers that do traffic studies, and it sounds like a fairly simple thing for this, for this subdivision, where you look at, you know, trip generation, you know, by the number of lots, site distances, trip distribution, you know, where people are going, and leading up to recommended mitigation measures, whether it be a lower speed limit, or a caution sign, or whatever it is, and so he hasn't gotten me that list yet, but I did talk to John Boardman for the Shaker Mill Pond Estates, and he was agreeable to at least considering this. So, you know, what we talked about before is having a joint traffic study that would cover developments in this general area of Littleton Road, and so that the burden of the traffic study is not borne by any one applicant, that we address all of these potential subdivisions at one time. And he thought that was a good idea. My part of the job would be to draft the scope of work, and he has some examples on that. Hoping that I can bring all of that to the next meeting on July ninth, so that we can get that going.
Your response, yeah?
Will you go back to Mr. Wetzel, and will you ask him about the traffic study that was done for the Marijuana Cafe?
Right, I was trying to get a hold of that.
That was done, and he told somebody else on our team that he didn't think he needed a traffic study because he had that one, which covers that portion of the road, and it's not going to be that much different from here to there.
And, and, and not to be too...
I just wanted to make sure of that.
You seem to have forgotten where you put it. No, there's some, there's some difficulty actually bringing, actually bringing that up, because I think, I can't think of his, the gentleman's name right now, but he was amenable to doing a traffic study at the time.
The gentleman you referred to from the state has that study.
Yes, he has the study from cannabis places. We were trying to get it directly from John Hillier, but he's busy, he's busy opening soon issue.
I, I have another, I have another, and do not, in any way mean disparage Mr. Hillier, he's done a phenomenal job in what he's doing in this town, I really appreciate what he's doing. But the other question I have is, and this is just the nuts and bolts, and we ran across this with Global Montello, traffic study determines that we have to put a sign on, a caution sign, a gate, whatever it is, it's a state road.
Yeah.
Okay, I would like the board to keep an open mind about requiring a private developer to make a modification on a road, when the timing may not be perfect, and for the neighbors also, I want you to know, Global Montello, we didn't get a sidewalk all the way to the Ford dealership, because of an ownership issue and the state issue. We now have, we might have a traffic nightmare down there, we don't know, we'll figure that one out, and it's built into the permitting, but we're coming up with probably a better solution for a gas station in that area, but requiring them to go all the way to the circle would have put that project way behind. And, you know, it's, it's like, we've kind of got stuck, there are some things out of our hands, so I just say that as a caveat, okay? I would love to do whatever the, I'm, I'm sure the proponent wants to do it, and stuff like that, but you gotta be, you gotta understand.
Right, no, I'm sure Mass DOT is cognizant, obviously, of the fact that it's a state road, and things don't happen as quickly on state roads as they do on secondary roads, where the town controls.
Should this go forward with, we nailed everything down, how horrible, I mean honestly, being held up by that, just going to keep an open mind about that, because we're, not only is here, have a lot of wetlands, we got a lot of roads that are owned by other people, that we don't have total control over. So, I'm just going to put that out to the floor.
Yeah.
Okay? So that one, you're amenable to the traffic study?
I'd rather not, but if that's where it checks out, that's what checks out.
Maybe in looking at this, we, we see that gauge cannabis's traffic study does cover future traffic to the extent that this is extraneous, then we decide not, that it's not needed.
I honestly believe that the amount of traffic we're going to put onto that road is so small a percentage of what that road sees every day, that it's going to have negligible impact on level of service in any, any of the intersections, because all you've got is the Shaker Road intersection across the street, and you've got the traffic circle, and we're certainly not going to clog up the traffic circle with what we do in eighteen hours. So I think it's largely going to be irrelevant.
Yeah, I was surprised today, I, I came home a little bit early in order to get prepped, and I saw backup traffic pass, um, the pizza, I can't think of the name right now, it was pretty, I was surprised. So, yeah, and there's also a parcel of land there.
We might make it a little bit worse, but it's not going to be a significant change.
Mark, did you have, I've jotted down other issues that you wanted to discuss.
You know, I just wanted to bring up to the board, I mean, the, the high water table is something we were all aware of, and we've been discussing before, I just wanted to put out a question to the board, I don't have a firm opinion on this, but, you know, does the board think that, you know, we should consider another expert to potentially hire, hydrogeologist, or somebody who, you know, can assess the high groundwater table issues in relation to the subdivision, are you satisfied that our DPW and the applicant's engineer can handle that aspect?
Would members have comments to make? Excuse me, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start, this one, I'm gonna follow protocol, guys, okay?
So, I, you know, if there's one thing that, that I'm, you know, trying to be aware of, it's the neighbors' concerns and my concern about that groundwater table, because frankly, I, I just don't know what the effect will be of putting up, you know, that number of foundations and units of roads or whatever in an area of high groundwater, and I'm not sure what type of consultant we reach out to, so I think I'll do that up to the professionals professional to figure that out. But I thought that we might consider a, and I'm glad we brought this up now, because I don't wanna delay them anymore, but wanted to make aware of the stuff, the situation. I think we probably should consider a consultant or peer review on the stormwater calculation part of it, and the groundwater calculation, or the groundwater concept of. My thought is that, and I don't know the answer to it, is if you interfere with the existing groundwater by putting in that number of foundations in the road and stormwater and all the other, does it actually affect how that groundwater moves, or how, does it change the elevation of the ground? It could make no impact at all. But I'd feel comfortable as a representative of the town and of the neighbors to be able to have that answer, to know that for sure this works, and it doesn't make a change. So, I'm, I'd like to consider an outside source making a recommendation to us about that.
I, I wanna concur with Mr. Diskin. I think, given the sensitivity of the site and the concerns we've already heard from the buddy neighbors, I think it makes sense to get that third party. Um, and then it's a win-win, because one way or another, we'll get an answer, or at least we'll get another answer. And the other thing is if the, if the answer's favorable to, to development, I mean, if you feel confident, at least the buddies know that, that it's been reviewed by a third party, can have greater confidence in decision, whether, it may not feel great about it, but at least there's another stake in the ground that says, yes, there's been more insufficient review, and has been taken very seriously, because I think it is a concern. And I don't think we even know what the high seasonal water is. We just have the average water table.
High seasonal.
Is that the high seasonal?
Thanks. Um, you put your hand up instantly when this came up, so you're next? I, Jess, I got you, I got you also in the back.
I mean, a lot of what we do is deal with exactly this, and the peer review that you're gonna get is somebody just like us that deals exactly like this. Um, so my suggestion, if you're gonna do a peer review of the stormwater, then that person you can ask about this as well. But the point I wanna bring up is, we're not putting a lot of foundations in the ground. We're putting slabs on a grade, and where we don't have to go down into the ground with a basement, we may put it at grade or a foot into the ground, but we're purposely not putting a bunch of foundations in the ground, in the groundwater, having to deal with dewatering, which would potentially do what you're worried about, just have a large impact. And we're also not cutting on the site, we're filling on the site. So, trying to raise things up above rather than down in for a large part of-
You have to do a cut first.
We have a little bit of cut, yeah. We have a little bit, but it's not, it's not like we're drastically altering the grading on the site. We're adding fill to it in order to not have to deal with the groundwater, to try and stay above it. So, my honest opinion is that the groundwater is not gonna be a large issue. If you wanna have stormwater reviewed, uh, that's not unusual, peer reviews for stormwater management, and those same people would probably be able to address your concerns about the groundwater. But the last thing I'll say is-
Oh, I doubt it.
But if you raise, if you raise the question of, we wanna understand the groundwater hydrology, let's go get a groundwater hydrologist, then the first thing he's gonna say is, well, let's drill holes all over it, plot the groundwater, and then we can take samples, and fifty thousand dollars later, you can get a definitive answer, and I don't think this warrants that at all. That's not what we're talking about. We're not doing that kind of a disturbance. We're not looking for that kind of a, uh, a peer review. That would just be unreasonable. So, I think, be careful when you talk about groundwater hydrology. You're talking about somebody who understands stormwater, and every civil engineer worth his salt deals with this every day, and every project they work with.
Thank you. Jess?
Yeah, just as a member of the Conservation Commission, not speaking for the whole board, but I think we, I think I would strongly support getting an outside consultant to look at the stormwater calculations, given the neighbors' concerns, and at least to do a superficial look at the groundwater.
I don't have any issue with that.
I'm sorry?
I said I do not have an issue.
Yeah, and I, I, I get to say a final comment. Um, yeah, I, I, I have a hydrological study that's gonna, as, as you put it so nicely, put a bunch of holes in it, and put a bunch of dye in the ground, watch it move around. We may discover that there's a lot of water in there moving through all the time. It's a very efficient way of moving water, and unfortunately, you see water, we don't know what the outcome's gonna be.
No, we don't.
Okay? Um, I sometimes think, if you have irrigation systems at your homes, thousands of pieces that you can't see, touch, taste, or smell, that you expect to work a certain way that surprise you constantly, water has a way of doing it. Um, I don't know that this warrants as a full hydrological study. Um, I do like the idea of doing a stormwater. And, um, in the, what's it called, full disclosure, this is a conversation I started by leaving a message with Mr. Wetzel today, because it would be nice to know what the hydrology is under our town, but I don't know that we're ever gonna know it, because it changes also, so.
I think a important thing for me is to, is to have an assurance that I'm just not approving this without going down this track, so that we can sit here and say, as a board, we went down the track, we looked at a few folks in the neighborhood, and we've done the best we can. I agree, it doesn't have to be that technical, but somewhere in the, the middle.
Yeah, because I, I did, did speak with the town, one of the town engineers, Dan, about this to a, to a great extent. Um, I think you've had conversations offline, and maybe it was your engineers, but a conversation about the type of soil that was there and stuff like that. Have you been able to come to agreement on that with Dan? There was, there was a conversation about the classification of soil.
Yeah, we did this, we did the actual soil testing out there, soil logs, so.
So, he's considered, it was had to do with the GIS map.
Hydrologic group, soil groups.
Well, we didn't even get to-
This is all, it's all sea soils, right? It's all sea soils, which are the least advantageous to us, but our position is it's all sea soils out there, basically.
Okay, so you basically took the-
Conservative. Well, it is what it is.
Exactly. Well, no, I appreciate you doing that. So, um, yeah, you would be open to peer, so peer review on the stormwater. We can ask him about the hydrology.
It's not unusual.
Sea soil, letter C, on a scale of A to D?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, C. A, A is like a sand that flows, you know, like beach sand, some water flows through it, and B is maybe a little more cemented, a little less permeable, but still pretty permeable. Sea soil has a clay content, it's starting to, and silk content, so it's starting to flow a lot slower, a lot slower in some cases, and a desoil is like muck, like you'd get in a, you know, the black muck that no water flows.
And there are shades of gray in each one of those classifications.
Literally.
Lots and lots.
Yeah. No, it's, it's, it goes from sand content to silk content. We can discuss it offline. I deal with it all the time. Why those trees dying?
Soil. You've gotta be, you've gotta be a DEP, a soil evaluator, licensed soil evaluator to do it, which a lot of our-
Okay, great. Um, were there any other issues that you had?
No, I think, you know, I'll, I'll get the letter out to legal counsel right away. Uh, I'll investigate the traffic study and the stormwater with the hydrogeology on the side right away, and, uh-
And Carly asked if we kept a, a press of that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Do we have to make a motion to authorize, do we have to make a motion to authorize Mark to-
Uh, yeah, it couldn't hurt, certainly.
Exactly. Yeah. There were two elements. Did we come to, do we need a motion about the traffic? Or is it just left?
Or it could be combined. That would be peer review studies, including traffic and stormwater slash hydrogeology.
So, there are two things we're discussing.
Right. May I ask that you exclude the traffic until you know whether you really need it or not?
Oh, okay. All right.
So, we're gonna look at the gauge report.
Let, let me hear the opinion, please. So, here's, so we just discussed a great many things, four, four or five things. Um, I would like to direct our town planner to communicate with our town legal counsel regarding the two questions in the email exchange between Calvin and Mark, specifically section nine point six, land clearing and grading, and the second is section ten point one, um, of the by, ten point one one of the bylaw.
Right.
Okay? I'm not gonna, please use this email. I think it does a really good job describing what's going on. So, that's, that's the motion I would entertain, one motion I entertain right now.
Take it.
I move that we instruct Mark Archambault to communicate with town council regarding section nine point six land clearing and grading, and section ten point one point one, um, uh, in the OSRD bylaw.
Seconded.
Moving seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none?
Aye.
All in favor, aye. Thank you. Okay, so that's number one. Number two, um, we'd like to have a motion for a, um, stormwater peer review. Am I short in changing that?
A little bit, not much.
Go ahead, Ken.
No, I'm not gonna. Okay. Um, I'd like you to make a motion that the planning board require a stormwater management peer review and associated groundwater peer review, which are the same context of that peer review. That one peer review consists of groundwater, stormwater, excuse me, stormwater calculations, the stormwater construction system, and so forth, and the same qualified engineer, qualified person being engaged in a peer review of the potential issues that we're not aware of with groundwater, if there are any.
Okay. Um, the caveat being, we've asked the proponent to rework a portion of the waste, of the surface water system right now.
I think they're closing now to use it for someone. We don't have to wait for revises, is that what you're saying?
I'm asking the question.
Okay.
No, I'd, I'd rather just proceed with it, because it's gonna take a while. We'll do it as it is.
Yeah, let's do it. Yes. You have a question?
Yes, I do. Would you include in that motion that we get to review the scope prior to engaging the consultant, because you may not know what they give you for a scope, and I'm gonna be able to look at it with our guys and see if it's a reasonable scope or if it's a cost charge.
And with the caveat we'll open Dan, the town, town DPDW engineer also, just ask questions, okay? I, I, you don't wanna give the cat?
Right.
A pitch?
Just wanna keep it reasonable, that's all.
Yeah, no, I, 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 yes, yes, reasonable, and we, we want it.
Oh, that's fine.
I, I, wow, we're actually getting to a point where we're actually doing-
I don't know why you don't have Dan do it. Just tell, let Wetzel, it could be a profit center.
He's got a lot of things to do.
He could be a profit center, and we can charge us for the review.
And, uh, has that motion been made?
I made it.
Yes.
You need, uh, seconded.
Seconded. Moving seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Thank you.
So, Mark has to come back for the next meeting, hopefully, with a decent scope.
Yes.
Mark Archambault?
Right.
Okay, because we're talking DPDW with-
Yeah, yeah. So, yes. Chair, do, regarding the traffic, I understand that we wanna look at gauge. Do we need to do any formal motion with that, or do we have an understanding that's applicable?
Let's just continue.
Let's be, I just wanted to be clear, because we need to, so we're gonna continue the meeting with traffic. Got it.
Exactly. Did you have anything else you wanted to discuss?
Uh, no. No, no. I'm all set. That's my list.
I have one more thing. It's, maybe total off the wall at this point in time.
Okay. We saved those.
We do have this concurrent, we have a concurrent approval going on with the notice of intent, you know, it's gonna go through conservation concurrently with our work. And the wetland boundary that, we're gonna, at this point in time, we're assuming that wetland boundary is cast in stone, because it's got the calculations related to it and whatnot. So, this is a chance the conservation could question the boundary, you know, we'd have to think about that later, that's all.
If the boundary changes, maybe it affects the, the location of the buffer zone and some other stuff. But let's assume it doesn't change significantly, and we'll just go what we have, that's all.
I'm gonna ask the question. Did you guys walk? She's gone.
She's gone.
I thought they walked.
We walked the site.
It was December or something, you know?
Oh.
That wasn't Oxbo, Oxbo wasn't with me.
Okay, so, to answer your question, the answer is yes. At the time of the walk of the site, it was both flagged and staked, and we did walk the boundary, we walked the fifty and the hundred, and fifty. We walked the boundary of the, um, wetlands, we walked the, we didn't walk, I walked most of the fifty, not everyone did, and we walked the hundred. Um, mostly because the fifty went through brambles and stuff, but it was, you know, there's, there, there they are. Um, so that has been set, and that has been done. I'm willing to bet the flags are still out there.
Most of them probably, huh?
Yeah, I mean, wind blows them off, but that's pretty much it. They were, most of them were tied to trees and stuff like that, so. A little bit of spring growth, but it's not gonna move it that far.
Yeah, Oxbo is a very good track record.
Yeah. And he was very patient, and took them through it, so. Um, did you have a question?
No.
Okay. Um, move, uh, and I, I think we've gotten this, uh, we've moved along.
Agreed.
Good idea, Tom. So, the question is, I move to continue to the next town planning board meeting.
I have a question before we make the vote on that. Uh, there's some outstanding issues about street lamps, fire hydrant.
Forget the next meeting.
Next meeting? Fine. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't forgotten. That's fine.
Let's get the ground-
We're not gonna be doing any extensive revisions of plans between now and next meeting.
Right, yeah. Okay, I just wanted-
Exactly. Um, uh, move to continue the public hearing to the next meeting.
Heather, Heather.
I just, do we have any new plans that are being submitted?
Just those, but I don't want, they're not formally submitted as a new version. I just wanted to show you guys that.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that these have put on here that there's nothing that needs to be discussed prior to continuing the hearing.
What's the DISC rule? Like shuttered thing?
It's the- Day, month, date, month and date.
I mean, I'll, I'll stay in the mix, I'll make sure. So, they're just including in the current set?
We'll follow whatever our professional engineer wants to do for initial responsibilities. But we will, we'll show you a revised grading plan for the next meeting as well, but we won't have revised the whole plan set until we're all done. I know we'll do it once.
Do you have any discussion?
Anything on your plate that we didn't discuss that you want us to talk about?
No.
What a strange question to get from the chair, huh?
Nope. I have no more, no more minutes to tilt at tonight.
Appreciate your, uh, patience.
Did you make that motion to continue?
Uh, I move to continue.
Seconded.
So, uh, move to continue the public hearing for the proposed intended subdivision fifty four of Littleton Road, also known as, what is the name again?
John Carroll, J.C. Madigan was John Carroll Madigan.
I wanted to know where you got John Carroll from. Thank you. John Carroll was there. For a second?
Second.
Uh, to the next planning board meeting?
Yeah.
July nine. July nine. Uh, moving seconded and discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And thank you very much to the audience, for sitting through it. It's not always pretty. It's not always pretty.
Can we take a quick?
Sure.
Over fifty. You can go second. All right.
Why don't you go upstairs?
Oh, yeah, upstairs.
That's right. Yeah, we forgot about one or two.
See, Mark?
Thank you for this role.
It's Mark's question. I never know if you want to suggest it. Oh, thank you so much. Just not get a time off my-
You can pay for phones here. Excuse me. Oh, yeah, very recent, I don't need to tell you any reasons.
I was gonna ask you about the-
Take care.
Thank you. My weeks are actually getting better.
The name of the, the name of the road is a progress work. It's gonna be Jack Madigan, J.C. and John Carroll. His owner, and his wife is my father's, is my father's sister. Her name is Betty Madigan, Carroll.
And she's still with us?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I was trying to ask, I mean, you know-
Well, when you asked for John Carroll, that was, that was it.
I'm building here as a property prop. I think that's what's really been triggered the traffic issues down there.
Which one? Oh.
Madigan line property. We refer to it as Madigan line.
Yeah, right, 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 yeah, yeah.
Exactly. So, but, um, yeah, this is, uh, it's been an interesting process.
Yeah, it'll take a little longer, but, yeah, I guess. We did the, the last one we did was, um, the one that, yeah, when I was gonna do all the sales on that, so I didn't expect us to, I don't know.
Which one?
From, from Shaker down, the ten lots that we had, or eight.
Oh, on the right hand side.
Yeah, before you get to Blue Northern.
Oh, that one?
Five months, they were also-
I was surprised. I was surprised. So, my background is, um, my father's son, to Longmark, way back when. I'm from Longterm, right, and also to the city of Kentucky.
Yep.
I use a real estate attorney, but, um, I think I used to, it's a, it's a, it's a practice of, 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 I worked in real estate, I worked, several, I worked in private, private, now I just do landscaping. I moved on to my retirement.
I used to do it. And I did the, when we were, when the little lot that we had, I was doing forty houses, and one was two houses. I brought money to the closing, and the lawyer made money, and I'm a real estate agent, so I started my own real estate, so, but I'm not making a lot of money, but at least I'm not bringing money to the closing.
There you go. But we, uh, yeah, seven years as a property manager.
Oh, is that right?
You have access to page three MLS?
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to call the meeting back to order in a moment?
Yeah.
Yeah, anything that they come in, we do referrals to my own company, so that's not a franchise.
It's a pot.
It's a pot. It's a lot of fun.
Yeah, it is. After doing part.
Thanks, Karen.
We only make money if we sell something.
Okay, let's call the meeting back to order, please. Thank you very much for your patience, we got a couple more. Uh, Mark's not here.
He's a dear, he'll.
You're still hanging. Just, yeah, let me, let me do this while Mark gets back. Have you all met Nathan?
No.
Okay. Part of our general announcements, I'm going to steal his thunder, is Nathan approached me during the special time meeting and he has shown some interest in joining and occupying the kid's seat on the planning board. Have you had a chance to speak to town administration yet? Town administration yet?
No.
Okay. So we haven't scared you away yet, the next step would be.
Talk to the.
Put together a quick resume or CV, send it into Curly. And so I send, you can send it to Robert's office, Karen Farley. And what will happen is, the next step after that is we meet in a joint session with the Board of Selectmen. It's a very quick meeting, hopefully will be very early on the agenda, and you will be appointed to the next general election, which one you choose to run, you run for the seat.
And that is this fall?
It'll be the spring. It'll be the spring.
There is a notice on, a public notice on the town's website.
Yeah.
Tell them you require.
Exactly. Yeah. Take a quick look at it and stuff, a quick letter, I'm interested in doing it. They know of you, I mentioned it twelve times. Well, you met, you met Robert at the, um.
Yes.
Town meeting.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Since I recently went through, would it be appropriate for me to, if I share with Nathan my phone number, contact information?
Yeah.
I just went through this myself a few months ago, so let me just give you a breakdown. Yep. Yep. No, I gave you my card.
And I think I gave you my card at the meeting, you were off on the call.
I have that.
Whether or not I answered the phone is always.
Sounds busy.
Okay. I am busy, but I always answer the phone, which is crazy.
And that way, I could tell you exactly, I could even show you samples of what I submitted. And I could tell you what I did, and I could even tell you a little bit about the election process.
I wish we could open those windows.
Because it's all very fresh.
Now the training.
Thanks, Nathan.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Yeah.
Thanks. So, I want to thank you all for making that a very productive meeting. I think we got a lot, I think we covered a lot, a lot of areas. I think we were able to get our views out, I think we were able to share our concerns, and I think we did it in a very productive way. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm not really very interested to be in a room full of screaming people.
Whoa.
So, we got a lot of work to do, but.
Right.
That's where we stand.
We made progress.
So I stole, okay, we've got a couple more things on the, on the agenda. It is 8:30, so I'm going to make a request that we kind of bump through this quickly.
We will.
Mostly because I haven't yet.
I understand, we're all tired, and I promise mine will be very quick.
Good. So we talked about, next on the agenda is a discussion of the draft subdivision regulations.
Right. And I re-reminded Superintendent Wetzel that, you know, we would like his comments on them as soon as possible, and I gave him a date of the end of the second or third week of July to get, to get us to, to be fair, you know, fourth of July and everything, but he's had it for a while, but he's been very busy with the P-Fest thing and a bunch of other things, so, you know, he's aware of that and, you know, hopefully we'll get his comments back so that we can move on the adoption of those this summer.
Excellent.
And, you know, this.
Can you remind me that the sequence of this, we have, we have to put an advertisement in the paper for a hearing?
Yeah.
Yeah, just, yeah, so it's, yeah, just a public hearing, no town meeting.
Yeah, it's a regulation.
No, it's a hearing.
It's a regulation, it's not a bylaw change, so it only has, it doesn't have to be the two consecutive weeks, 14 days beforehand, it could just be one week before the meeting, so with the paper going out on a Friday, and landing on Tuesday, it could, it could basically be within, you know.
And then just put it on the board out here.
Yes. So there's no 14 day requirement, it's just a regulation, it's not a bylaw change.
Okay. So, we're coming late July.
Right.
Great. Discussion master plan.
Yeah, let me just make.
Wait a minute. Sorry, sorry. Poor Ken. So, do we want to, we're decided then as a board, we're going to wait for Mark before we talk about any of the other sections in this, or, I thought the planning board could start discussing it, maybe not tonight, but.
Yeah, we can, we can start discussing it, yeah, you know.
So we, I mean, there's, there's going to be some sections in here that he's going to come back, he's probably not in the center, but he's going to agree.
Yeah, a lot of it is administrative and that probably won't affect him, he may have no comments on those, it's more the technical aspects of the regs that will, you know, want his feedback on.
Yeah. And we, you know, what are the, so the stuff that's important is what I'm getting at, we may, we tried to figure this out the last time, how could we.
Right.
Itemize it and check it off and say we, you just move on to the next section.
I think, yeah, it would be a good idea to start reviewing, we get as a board together even before we get the comments from.
How many sections started?
I don't know.
I'm just saying.
What I had in mind was.
What I had in mind was we could just put like sections one through five or whatever, and just.
That's, that's one way to do it. And the other way to do it is say, okay, let's, let's just look at what's, for instance, let's look at common driveways and get that off the table.
Oh, right.
And discuss that.
Yeah.
Pick a topic.
I love that idea.
I would be more inclined to pick if, those of you who worked on the subdivision regulations, what were the top five or top topics?
Okay.
Topics, and let's just start there, okay? I am going through a boilerplate, you know, changing from chairman to chairperson, not interested. But let's pick the contentious items, okay? And any intersections between that and our current bylaw and the, you know, we're going down the OSRD road, so.
Exactly.
Any intersections between those two would be of interest also, I have a feeling. Yes, Jonathan?
Mr. Chair, also, directly related to this, as we just witnessed today, we're learning a lot about the limitations, weaknesses and strengths of our regulations as we see real plans brought before us. And I just think that it would be a really good idea to assign to at least one of us, and I'd be happy to do it, but just keep a punch list of the stuff that comes up to say, like, for instance, today came up, we need a better definition, a clarified definition of open space, for example. We need something about common driveways. We, in other words, there has, we need a procedural mechanism for recording and capturing those things that need attention that aren't immediately about that particular project, so they don't get lost and we don't, do you know, you know what I'm getting at?
Yeah, I do. And I'm happy if you would like to keep a punch list, that'd be great.
I will, I will officially volunteer to keep a punch list.
And I will, again, as a caveat to that, sometimes you don't want to have it so strict.
Exactly.
You may have missed my comment earlier to the proponent, which went like this, it's almost like this piece of property was waiting for the OSRD. And Calvin's response is, it seems to fit very well, or something along those lines you have to watch today. What made this property valuable was as a example, which is the truth of what zoning bylaws are supposed to do. And where, that's juxtaposed with density, more people want to come to town, more, more ways of doing things. So zoning changes continuously, it is a living, breathing animal.
Oh, I get that.
I've been here for four years and we've done a lot. And we will always say things like, oh, the denominator, the dens, the denominator doesn't make sense. That's the truth. But we've got what we've got. So, we, we'll discuss, let's create a punch list and then let's discuss them and decide, do we really want that or not?
That's fair.
And do we want to saddle future planning boards with that?
I, I think that's fair, but I think at least as a starting point, you got to start saying, what are they? And then if we make a conscientious and deliberate decision as a body to say, no, let's not. Example, OSRD, the whole point was to create more open space, right? That's the whole point. Now this is it, so the town would end up with space in perpetuity. Well, we want to make sure then, that whatever we have, what we learn is that isn't simply game to just get more lots in a development, that actually the town is getting what it intended to get through the execution of law in town meeting.
But the other thing is in front of OSRD is cluster housing.
It's just another way to describe it.
Yeah. So if you take a look, if you, if you, if you remove the piece of land underneath the one we're looking at right now, it's a cluster development.
Of course.
It's exactly what it is, shared driveway, shared roadway.
Do have, there's one big thing about the OSRD and that we can't recite it, and that is that the fall town meeting. So we, as an objective following on John's idea, we want to go to fall town meeting with revisions. So we need to know the calendar backwards from when the legal council will support it and back to when we have to get it done, because we're going to run out of time.
Right, it's changing the denominator.
It's, it's a number of things. It's a number of things.
Okay, good.
But.
Yeah, I'll develop a tiny one.
That to me would be even more important for the subdivision regulations. I've put the subdivision regulations in the back burner to get the OSRD.
Exactly. Well, every time you choose to do one thing, something else pops up.
Exactly, so we can, we can do both of them.
Yep.
It's valid that.
I'll develop a tiny one.
I'll give you an example, I'll give you, I'll give you an example, okay? In the, in the 10-1, this is something they didn't have to do because we didn't finish the subdivision regulations. So right here in 10-1-3, okay? Development impact statement and conservation analysis, so that paragraph has two things in it. They didn't need to do the first one because an applicant must present sufficient information on a environmental and open space resource for the board to make a term. The required information shall be provided in the form of a capital letters, development impact statement, as described in the subdivision regulations. But we never did that in the subdivision, the subdivision regulations don't include that. So they didn't have to do that.
Yeah, but, yeah, that's something.
And we need to clear that up by putting that in the subdivision regulations and approve them.
Is it in the subdivision regulations?
No.
No, but I'm aware that it's not, and that's something that's on my long-term list of things that need to go in there.
So that's the kind of thing that, you know, we can clear up a little bit, do you?
Right.
If, if we have a number of concerns with the OSRD, we do, my, we need that calendar to shoot for those.
Yeah, yeah. Because that helps a lot, you know, doing the marijuana.
Oh, it's great.
I know Alan did it for the Form Based Code.
I still can't believe there was no discussion.
I know on the Form Based Code.
Wow, okay.
Okay, so we're going to take the chairman's recommendation that we've, I mean, I could put.
Let's pull the hot topics.
Okay.
Make it interesting in the beginning and then we'll just go through, then we'll just go to the boilerplate.
Yeah, because we don't need to go through like what we're going to, what the plans are that are required, for instance, we're not going to debate that, you and I.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Well, these are the plans, you got to put them in, you know, these are the, and there was a couple, only a couple more definitions that needed to be added, we did have quite a few definitions. It talks about, but I think the hot topics is a good idea. Those are the things we need, those are the things the board has to agree on.
Yeah. And not change over time, but I think that's a good, that's a good way to start, okay? Are we done with the draft subdivision regulations discussion?
Yes.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the master, discussion of the master plan.
Thanks. So Chair, here's what I'm thinking, is that by the nature of the beast, we're often put in a position where each meeting is reactive, the agenda is directed by what comes in. And I think, well, it's, I understand exactly how and why that happens. I think we, what the risk there is that the longer term things get neglected, and in particular, it's the master plan, and the master plan has an implementation plan. And I thought unless we have a deliberate process put into place to address the concerns, it'll just fall through the cracks, because we'll be having meeting after meeting with whatever plans are submitted. So what I would propose then is, if we could dedicate five to 10 minutes each meeting to discuss some aspect of the master plan, what I was thinking, for example, is if we say, okay, whatever the next meeting is, we say, next meeting we're going to talk about land use goals, there are three action steps, I would say, all of it, we would agree to read the section of the master plan regarding land use goals, make, mark our notes and be prepared to come to the meeting during that five to 10 minutes to talk about any issues germane to that section, so that we don't swallow the whole goat, we do section by section, keep track of what the key issues are, and then determine, okay, we see that we have 18 action areas as defined by the implementation plan, we're going to say, this year we can legitimately do three to five as our priorities, set them and just put it into motion. I don't think any of that can happen until we agree to a process, say, at least bit by bit, week by week. That's my proposal.
Okay. I agree with Jonathan.
So, one of the things I understand, my understanding, and I was involved in, of course, the master plan, and there are, I got a lot, I got a lot of thoughts on the master plan. Number one being that in its, in its entirety, I think it's a wonderful thing. Master plan is there to accomplish a great many things, both administratively, with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and also to help direct the way the town is going. There are people who work for the town, who are charged with proxy's master plan, and I'm concerned that we work in, work parallel with them. When I saw your email, the first thing that occurred to me was, talk to Alan Menoy.
I did. I did.
Yeah, but I also tried, I also reached out to Alan, was unable to get a hold of him and hadn't left him a message and stuff. So I just, I'm happy to do it, I think it's a great idea, but let's not, let's not fall into the trap of doing it as an island.
I agree with that, so. If I can add to your comment, Chair? If you look at the smaller book, the implementation plan, it text, what they've done is they've taken everything in the master plan and broken it down into actual action steps that need to be accomplished in order to fulfill it. But they've also broken them down by responsibility, so I want you to be aware that what I did here was this isn't obviously the whole implementation plan, this is only the implementation plan objectives and the responsibility of either the town planner or the planning board. So I said, I pulled those out. My, I, I agree that as a whole, we have to do these in, you know, in parallel with the others. But I do also believe that unless I misread the implementation plan, we've been charged with something. It's been given to us, as it says, responsibility, us. And I think that even as we do this in parallel, the other committees and officials will be looking and saying, okay, planning board, what do you think, what's, what's your plan on this particular objective, what's your comment, what's your, whatever, what's your take? I think we can do that. And maybe even model it for the other departments if necessary.
And to that end, I think it's important to understand what they're doing so that we're working on the same tasks.
Well, we might not be working on the same task, because they're working, there are, different departments are gonna have different objectives than the ma, master plan they're responsible for.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah, so the conversation that I would like to have with Alan is, we have 18 things to do here, whatever the number is. What is our charge, in what order do we take them on? As you see things happening in this town, which, 'cause, and I don't know what they are in front of you, okay? I don't think they are in particular, but are they all of equal importance, or are they all of different, are they, could you assign a different level of importance?
They rank them by priority.
Very similar.
Do you want him to do it, or should we do that? I think we should do it.
I think one of the first steps could be me, you, and Alan get together and go over the planning goals and objectives as, as relation to the master plan, and then bring that discussion back to the.
Okay, I, I like that working process.
And there are two reasons why I do this, okay? First of all, our master plan follows a very formulaic response to a master plan. We had a, the person helping us helped us with, I believe, Courtney wasn't around for the first one, the town meeting.
Right.
But she was around for the second one, but the firm that Courtney works for, they do most of the master plans in Massachusetts. And ultimately, what happens is you get a room full of people who can't agree on what the outcome should be. And so we came up with an outcome that was acceptable to the town. By definition, things are going to get short shift and things become more important. Number one, number two, over time, things will change. Our master plan, what was being put together, especially the economic portion of it, in no way contemplated Form-based code.
Actually, it's, it's right here.
Yeah, well, in the, in the beginning portions of it, okay, Alan wasn't here in town.
Right.
So it wasn't part of the consideration. So if we have an implementation, implementation step of a Form-based code that isn't going to work in concert with what we're doing, I would ask for his input so that we use our time.
I, I'd agree with that. I also, if I make one other, there's another reason for this.
Yeah.
For doing, for this emphasis in the master plan. It's not just so that we're more proactive in fulfilling that, those duties as, as voted on by town meeting. But I want you to consider the impact of what it means to people watching, including applicants, abadu, citizens, people watching. If in our meetings, we actually had a board up and it said master plan priority items, and they actually saw on every agenda, master plan, five to 10 minutes, it sends us, it sends a message to the community that we're not just here to respond to what applicants pose before, bring before us, but we take seriously our duties regarding the future of this town. It sends, I think, an incredibly important message that I don't think is completely understood yet.
Can I make the request that Jonathan gave invited to a couple land use meetings?
Oh, yes.
Email and give what happened.
Yeah, Thursday, yeah.
So let me, I wanna talk about that for a minute, okay? In direct response to the reactionary nature of, that's been happening, not in just there, but across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, probably two handfuls of communities that are not reactionary across the entire Commonwealth, mostly because this is in a volunteer elected position.
Of course.
And the level of expertise we need to have, I do a lot of studies, we, I was joking about being an engineer, but generally, closest we got to being an engineer, the level of understanding and level of expertise is very, very high. And the not, and the, you know, it's, it's the knowledge bases centimeters wide and kilometers deep for a lot of this stuff, okay? We can't ever hope to be able to do that. But it brings me back to, I, I lost my trail of thought there, I'm sorry.
Alan Menoy.
The groups here in town who are charged with future land use, not the town clerk, not the town administrator, not town manager, excuse me, not the tax collector so much, not the building department, though I believe Charlie is a member of the land use. So people who are involved with land use get together on a weekly basis, weekly, still.
Mostly weekly, yeah.
Mostly weekly. And they're doing a couple of things. A, communicating across departments about what's going on. Stuff happens in the town, and in the excitement of the moment, we forget to communicate. So that's an important piece of the process. But secondly, it's bringing to everybody in the room, which includes Mark, includes Joanna from Conservation, includes Mark Wetzel from DPW, who else from DPW, is Dan there?
Uh, yeah, Dan, that's been coming recently, the fire chief.
The fire chief, the police chief is involved.
Yeah.
So as land gets used, so they're also going to help set what the priorities are for the master plan. Commonwealth of Massachusetts, I understand it requires a master plan to be reviewed every 10 years. You cannot hope to do something that will still bear importance 10 years from now. You know, where, where, where in the master plan is the discussion of electric vehicles? Where in the master plan is the discussion of non?
No, I can understand being incomplete, it can never be sufficient because of change, but to say that it can never do things that would be relevant 10 years later, I'd say it's the opposite is true. The things that we, the decisions we make here have impact over many generations, which is precisely why we have a master plan.
So I asked you to, to some research in the master plan, take a look at transportation alternatives and how is it handling the master plan?
I don't know.
It's not.
But what I do know is that there have been priorities assigned to us.
Yeah.
That I know.
I understand that. And I would ask that we look at each one of those as a priority and decide where on the scale of things to do we do it.
I agree, I think we should do that, I think we should, and I, I'm not saying we take all, in fact, if we did a cursory look, there's probably at least four of these we'd strike off, because they've either been done or they've become already irrelevant. And that's easy.
Done.
So now we're down to whatever. And then we look at what's ever was left and say, okay, we can't realistically tackle these within six months to a year, which ones do we wanna do, which are important? And we could do, have that conversation among ourselves, but also suggest the insight from other people who touch on land use to say, you know, this is where we are as a planning board, thinking of real important priorities and our responsibilities in the master plan. Do you concur, does this, does this jive with some of the things that you regard as priorities? And are, is there mutualism here where we're working together toward a common goal? That makes sense. I agree with that process.
I'd like to make just one quick comment.
Yeah, please.
So I understand Jonathan's concern, I agree with it, but I think that there's an overriding tip to it, and that is that the master plan is really under the direction of the planning board, the whole master plan. It's, it's basically approved by the planning board first. It's under the, the master, the master plan falls under the guise of the planning. So I don't, I agree with you 100%, that I'm not gonna look at all the transportation aspects and whatnot, but this minimum piece is a good thing for us to think about. And put it out over six months or eight months around here. But the, I think the important point that he made was that it shows that we are interested in this follow-up and we've brought it back to the board to see, and that's, I think, a very big objective of the, of the master plan, is that the board will look at these things.
Right.
Put it out, so, put it out every other month, or put it out once, not, not every meeting, but maybe over the other meeting. You know, something like that.
And this marks, and this is a marked change, in previous planning boards, there was a member assigned to the master plan who brought back the report. We are now at that point where the master plan has been done, we're no longer meeting on a regular basis to put together a master plan. It went off, it was written, it was presented, it was edited, and it has been accepted. It's been submitted to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, so we're in compliance of that, which has serious financial. It has, it has very favorable financial impacts on the town.
I'm sure it does.
Now, the, the snide comment is, you don't have to follow it once you've done it. It doesn't, that does not, no one checks, number one. Number two, as you mentioned, things do fall off. So I'm not gonna believe this anymore, 'cause it's, it's getting on, it is getting fairly late, but yes, I wanna do it, but I would ask you to, as we use our time going forward, that we maintain an open relationship with the land use committee here in town. We find out what's important to them, so we're all kinda pulling yours in the same direction. Because these guys are busy and we can, whether we want to or not, we can generate upset in their lives, and that's not a good thing sometimes.
Not necessarily. So what I'm, where are we then? Do, do, do we have an agreement that we do wanna do this, is how to set up a regular process for addressing master plan issues? And we, we agree that that's an idea that we wanna do as a board?
I, yeah, I'm, I think, I think, I mean, first of all, I would put it, first of all, I would put it to a vote, I would put it to the board also, if they wanna do it, how, how we would like to accomplish that. And I would just ask a little bit of research, work with the town employees about it right now.
Process, you know, if we meet with Alan, 'cause he's got a whole process in mind, actually, he knows more about that than I do, 'cause he was spearheading this way before I was even hired.
We, we may not agree with Alan's process.
Right.
But let's, let's, let's. At least, no, so, when I, when I was part of, part of the master plan committee, I think I went to a meeting or two or three a week at one point.
So the action step here is, would you like me to meet with Mark and Alan, get some understanding of process, and then be prepared at the next meeting to, to have a proposed process going forward?
Similar to the subdivision plan. What are, what are the important topics?
I, I tell you, the second part, I feel, I think we, I do not want to take away the planning board's authority in determining some of the important processes, especially since it's already, they've already been defined. I'd rather say it this way, that I could come to you with a sense of, these are what other people have said, Alan, our community, economic, community development, and this is other, it's important, but I would reserve that it's not definitive, that we as a planning board have the right to make those planning board decisions under our authority. And I just wanna reserve the whole of this, right?
Yeah, yeah.
But I can definitely come to you with a sense, this is my understanding from talking to X, Y, and Z about what's important, and I propose this kind of working process moving forward so that we can start addressing these things, you know, together at our meetings. Is that acceptable?
Yes. Town planner update announcements?
Okay.
I think you were out of the room, I told them about Nathan King.
My big announcement is, I hope to bring to the next planning board meeting a draft of the new zoning map. I went to the Monmouth Regional Planning Commission last week, met with their GIS person, told them we need the title block, all the stuff that's mentioned in the thing. Downtown business will be changed to Form-based code districts, and we may, you know, we had to change the aquifer boundary in one thing that was already approved, so, yeah, they know what's happening. They're gonna get us a draft that we can review as a group, and once we agree to it, they'll take the draft off and they'll put a final date on it, and we'll have to, I think we might want an agenda yet. I don't know if we have to have an actual hearing on it.
No, you don't.
You know, it'll be an agenda item to, to sign it, and so we will have a signed official copy of the zoning map.
Oh, goodie.
You know, so for the next meeting draft, hopefully the meeting after that.
We can sign.
Signatures.
Don't go changing any more zones.
No, I know, well, you know, they, they may change in the future, but at least for now, we will have an official.
To get it to that level of acceptance.
They will change in the future.
They will change in the future, yes.
Listen, the simple fact that our zoning bylaw states that zones will originate in the middle of the bright way, and we have them going through the backyards of people's houses.
Yeah, I know.
That in itself is gonna be a change.
Many of the boundaries do not make sense, but that's, that's a future big, big, big job.
So we're gonna have to figure, we'll have to figure that out.
But at least for now, we'll have an official map that's official, so.
That's good.
So that's all I have.
Administration announcements, do we have any new business?
I have a piece of old business.
Please.
You know, maybe Mark can give us an update, but the last meeting, we had a, an attorney, Mr. Knox maybe, representing the owner of a piece of land on Central. And the question was not before us regarding how, how could they handle that potential old subdivision versus today's new regulations, and I thought we'd have that on our agenda, that we either, you know, sometime it would come back up again, but we need to, I don't know how we get to the answer.
Yeah, I discussed that with Carly, because she, you know, 'cause there are two options, and I discussed that with Peter Knox, who wanted us to do a simple subdivision plan that would, you know, do a cul-de-sac, that we could wave a lot of the requirements to get the frontage for the back lot, or we could, they could do a variance request for, you know, less frontage for that lot and that.
Advantage request, we would come to the ZBA.
Yes, yes.
It might be a simpler process rather than doing subdivision.
So Carly was away this week, so I didn't have a chance to follow up with her on that, but, you know, I set that in motion, I do need to follow up.
Who's the current chair of ZBA, is it Sam?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Would you, would you feel, would you maybe give Sam, Sam a call?
Sure.
Wasn't it a question that if it still was a live subdivision or not?
Well, the first question is, yeah, if nothing happens over some amount of time, what is it?
Well, the ironic twist of the thing is that the subdivision falls on SS's map, and she's been taxed on the second lot as a buildable lot.
Yeah.
She's being, she's being taxed for two lots right now.
So, and so.
And assessed for two lots.
So I think, I think the, if I read the tea leaves correctly, or the mood of the room at the time, without putting any undue burden upon the proponent, we're trying to find a way to let something that's been dormant become active again.
Right.
If it sounds like her approaching the ZBA makes sense to do it, maybe Mark can help with talking to Sam about it and see where Sam is, and see the ZBA, see if he's, maybe help him get on the agenda there. 'Cause I didn't, I didn't honestly not want to go through a whole new drawing.
Charlie, does he send all applicants to the ZBA? He can tell you which part of the co, 'cause he'd have to make the, the call is just gonna.
I actually have to talk.
I just think we probably have administrative support that can help that out.
If you get his recommendation that that would work, then he'll give that to Charlie.
If it wasn't this existing subdivision already, then we'd just be trying to determine waivers.
Exactly, right, yeah.
If it was an existing subdivision, we could waive, 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 and they could put a common, so-called common driveway in, there's no ways around it.
The impact, I was thinking about, if I recall correct, if I recall, that piece of property is on Central app, but it backs down the planning's pond.
It does.
Yeah, there's a waterfront.
So there is going to be a conservation piece to it too.
Have we talked about that?
Yes, we did, you mentioned it.
I just wanna make, just, yeah, so.
Yeah.
I have, I've been on planning boards where they've approved a cul-de-sac without any cul-de-sac.
Excuse me?
I've been on planning boards where they've approved a subdivision, or that has a cul-de-sac, they had no cul-de-sac.
I saw a planning board, I saw a planning board approve a subdivision which was a single lot.
Yes, I did too, and I can tell you who drafted the plan, it would've been Bruce Rubel.
So, okay, would you please follow up on that and then?
Yes.
As soon, in, in available time.
They waived everything.
Thank you.
All about it.
Yep.
Time for us to talk right now?
Thursday, 'cause I'm taking tomorrow off.
Should I call you Thursday, or do you want to green check Thursday?
All right.
It's cool.
If you wanna.
Anything else?
If you can show up.
How's your house?
Right here, right.
Full boxes, and I'd like to get home and unpack some before I go to bed.
Yeah, okay, um, hearing that, nothing else. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much for your thanks.
Thank you.